All right, everyone's here. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Robertson, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A second.
Vice Mayor McGill had seconded already. Ms. Robertson, would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right. Counselors, are there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. We are currently accepting applications for boards and commissions. Anyone wishing to apply can visit the city website for more information. They can apply online, mail in an application, or contact the Clerk of Council office to schedule a time to drop off their application. A list of open board seats and applications to apply are also available at the James Madison or the JMRL Central Branch Library. Downtown library.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? No, all right. Any recognitions, items for recognition? All right. Ms. Robertson, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes. One, resolution appropriating funds for the Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program, Summer Food Service Program, $200,000, second reading. Number two, resolution appropriating funds for Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award, $539,333, second reading. Three, resolution appropriating previously approved funds to the Albemarle Charlottesville Historical Society for the purpose of identifying the individuals interred in the unmarked graves at Penn Park and their descendants, $2,500, second reading. Number four, resolution appropriating previously approved funds for a match of a Virginia Department of Historic Resources 2122 State Survey and Planning Call Share Program grant for Phase One of the Charlottesville Downtown Mall Historic Landscape Study and Management Plan, $10,000, second reading. And number five, resolution appropriating funds for Family First Prevention Services Act for the Department of Social Services, Family Services Staffing, $164,607. And this is actually the second reading. This item was first heard by counsel on June 19th.
All right, thank you. Counselors, any comments? All right, Mr. Will, I'll turn it over to you to see if there's any comments on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience and you'd like to address counsel on one of these five items on the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Each person will have up to three minutes. There will be a separate community matter session following this. Mayor Walker, I don't see any hands.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second.
Ms. Robertson?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
And Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That carries, 5-0. Next up, we have the City Manager Response to Community Matters and to Counselors. Mr. Boyles?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I wanted, there were a couple of requests from the last council meeting that I wanted to provide some updates for. One was Ms. Turner, who had asked about a copy of some records from a family case in the past in discussing with the City Attorney's Office, a new law that just came into effect July 1st. Those records may now be requested through a Freedom of Information request by the general public. Previously, it would have taken a direct respondent to request those documents, but now the general public, effective July 1st, can request those through a FOIA act and they can contact our Freedom of Information Office, the City Attorney's Office, or the City Managers Office for help with that. Also, Mr. Fogel had asked about some police documents regarding a case that he was representing. It is now my understanding that through a compliance from a federal subpoena, those documents have now been provided. The Sacagawea Statute Solicitation of Offers was published on the city website today and also emailed to all the interested parties that had submitted their information request. Offers are due August 27th with a plan to have recommendations to counsel to begin considering which of the offers you may be interested in during the month of September. Also, from the previous meeting, Ms. Fiding had asked about a history of affordable housing that has been assisted by the city. The city now has an approved budget to develop a 10-year history of affordable housing assistance and currently working with the consultants for a revised scope of services for that inventory. Also, just hopefully, you all have seen some. We've been marketing pretty heavily. You've seen in the newspapers or online. Our city transit department is actively recruiting for school bus drivers as well as transit bus drivers. Starting pay begins now at $16.97 an hour and up according to qualifications and includes a city full-time employee healthcare benefits. And most importantly, with your approval at the last meeting, provides a $2,400 sign-on bonus for both transit drivers and school bus drivers. And this is paid over three installment periods, over a nine-month period. And finally, national news that I know you all are watching has recently highlighted unspent federal Cares COVID funds for housing assistance across the country. Well, we're happy to say the city of Charlottesville, and in partnership with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, regionally expended all of its available Cares funds prior to any appropriation of the American Rescue Plan funds that we're currently spending. City council added to this amount funds originally appropriated for other Cares-related expenditures until these ARP funds were available. Once the ARP funds were approved, the city has allocated $385,000 towards housing assistance and the pathways assistance. These funds are expected to fund rental assistance at least through October, at which time we will add more funds to that. By the end of July, the Department of Human Services had cleared all backlogs of calls that we had taken before June 10th. The Assistance Hotline is again open and operational for assistance. Renters are required to apply for state funding before accessing city funds beyond their very first rent assistance payment from the city. City operators are assisting the renters with the state application procedures as the state procedures are quite a bit more extensive than ours through our pathway funds. And finally, with evictions that became effective on July 31st, we can say that there are currently a lot of state and local funds available to help the renters. And it is our understanding, too, that they are guaranteed a 60-day continuance before the actual evictions can occur. Mayor and counsel, that's all that I have for you tonight.
All right, counselors, any comments? I have just one with the request from Mrs. Turner. Are there records available? Because that's been part of her question. That what she's been saying is that in some cases, she's been informed that there are records and other cases, there aren't records. So I think that answer would help her. And then you're saying if there are. So before we send her to submit a FOIA to, for somebody to her that the records that she's inquiring about aren't available. I just think that would be helpful. And then we want her to submit a FOIA for the records is what you're, what you're saying.
Yes, and again, Ms. Robertson, and not sure if Chief Brackney's on, but may be able to help me. They have the history with this. But my understanding, one of the dilemmas we had before was we weren't allowed to release documents except to the direct parties with the case. Now, as of July, the end, July 1st, I'm sorry, we now can release those under a FOIA request. I am familiar with what you're saying, Mayor, that there's a question of what documents are available and what are not. And that's something we'd be glad to work with Ms. Turner on so that we could say what we do, well, perhaps not everything that we have, but we can answer her questions of what we have and maybe don't have. Lisa, can you add more to it? You have a bit more history with this.
Yeah. So my understanding is that the primary confusion is over whether or not there is some video of the arrest of Ms. Turner's son. I am not aware of such a video. And I believe that there was some miscommunication because of a typo in correspondence a couple of years ago. But the law, the FOIA law has changed effective July 1st, and that allows criminal investigative records to be opened up to greater review. And to the extent that there are records associated with the incident that led to the arrest of Ms. Turner's son, those records are no longer subject to an absolute exemption at the city's discretion. So there are perhaps some portions of it that might not be made available. But in terms of the criminal incident records of that arrest, those are now open to a greater extent than they were for the last several years. The records of an Internal Affairs investigation may or may not be open. There's a separate discretionary release for that. But bottom line is that it is my understanding that there is not a video of that arrest. And I have not seen one, but that's the most I can say. It's difficult to prove a negative. But if there were one, you know, it would most likely be in the records of the criminal incident. But again, I don't want to get hopes up too much because if there were originally a record after the prosecution was closed, the police may have, in terms of managing how long that record is preserved, the Records Act may have allowed that to be. It may not have required that to be retained. But I have never seen a video, and to my knowledge, there is not one. And that that has been the primary confusion of the years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Counselors, any other questions or comments? All right. Next up, we have Community Matters. We didn't have any pre-registered speakers today, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Willer for request to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We have 23 people in the audience right now. If you'd like to get in line to speak, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And if you're watching on Facebook or BoxCast and you'd like to join the webinar, you can go to charlottesville.gov/zoom to register and join the meeting. Our first speaker tonight is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, good evening.
So my concern is you all not addressing individuals who are leaving the city. You're keeping it very hush-hush now. You did not do that under previous leadership. I do not want to hear that this is a personnel matter. It wasn't personnel under black leadership. So don't make it personnel now under white leadership. Another thing, Lisa Robertson, you have yet to call me back. I emailed you specifically concerning an issue I wanted to talk about on January 21st. I told you I was not going to discuss it via email. You've yet to call me back. I even wrote again, February 2nd. You have yet to call me back. The unprofessionalism from you is just ridiculous at this point. And I let it linger just to see if you was going to follow back up to call me back. And you still have not. I don't know which sweeping under the rug down there. But it's still a bit messy, even after people that left the city. 2020, 2019, 2020, and 2021. But I can tell you that I am very, very concerned about the future of black people in this city. Not just black citizens, but black leadership. The level of disrespect that we get on every level from you all clearly doing what you want to do at this point, I'm pretty sure. You're leaving the mayor out of a lot of stuff. I mean, I hear it all. Y'all already know that. But it's unacceptable at this point. If we can't do our job in City Hall, if we can't live in a city that we pay taxes for, if we can't just be normal citizens like you all, like you and your friends, then that's problematic. And you all know that. You can give a mil, I mean, $10 million to affordable housing. Y'all still not fixing the real issue here. And that's allowing black people to do their jobs. It's allowing people who are working on equity to do their jobs their way, not your way. And Chip, we should really have a discussion. I brought this up before about the level, the number of people that continues to leave this city. Last year, it was the last city manager's problem. So who is it to blame now? And don't put it on the mayor. We not going to keep putting it on black people. It's not black people at this point. We should have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Harold Foley. Harold, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Hey, thank you so much. Can anyone hear me?
We can.
That plant look beautiful. I am here today to talk about the Oversight Board. I had a wonderful meeting with two council members, and we were slated to have other meetings with other council members. I'm here to represent the People's Coalition. And we really want to make sure that folks understand why it's important to have an Oversight Board. I'm pretty sure Lord can speak to the fact that he heard from other people within the People's Coalition that looks like me that has some concerns about policing in Charlottesville. So I'm not going to be here long because I don't like talking long. I like to take action and do things, GSD. And so one thing I hope that we can do is make sure we GSD and get it right for the Oversight Board. And please, once again, get it right. Oversight means to make sure that the police is not policing themselves, but citizens are having the opportunity to make the decision. Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a lovely night and enjoy the rest of your day. Bye.
Thank you.
We have five hands raised right now. We have five hands raised right now. Next up is Laura Bizon, and please correct me if I mispronounce that, who will be followed by Charles Neer. Laura, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Hi there. Thank you. Hello. Yeah, my, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in response to a New York Times article about the future land use map I read today. My name is Laura Bizon, and I live at, I live in Amherst Commons near Rose Hill Drive in Preston. The future land use map only came to my neighbors and my family's attention after the public comment period had ended. As it is, my back door to our house is roughly 20 feet away from a planned high intensity zone. Now, before you make any assumptions about my family and white privilege, let me tell you that I'm half Peruvian, but I want to focus on my husband, who is Filipino. His grandfather was a Filipino U.S. soldier who survived the Batan Death March and was promised citizenship by the FDR administration. This promise was broken, and he fought and waited decades to get his whole family to the States. My husband immigrated to Charlottesville in the early 90s with nothing, no privilege, and he stayed in a tiny, what are now UVA dormitories with his parents, who struggled to find low-paying jobs amidst a lot of hiring discrimination at the time. It was not easy. His dad was fired as a pizza delivery man for getting lost in his new city. But eventually, his family was able to save up enough to move three families into a thousand-square-foot duplex. And years later, into their own, their very own duplex with a small yard to boot. Make no mistake, they wanted a patch of greenery, not a small apartment for a family of four. Let's be clear, most low-income families in Charlottesville want single-family homes for their families, like most of us enjoy here. Let's also be clear, it's not right to assume you know the race and background of the person whose backyard you are impacting. Our neighbors are another interracial couple, a black man and a white woman. Although my husband is, quote, "smart and educated," he is certainly not of white privilege. The only way him or I could afford to go to nursing school was through RTC scholarships, and we used our GI bills from over 10 years of service combined to get advanced degrees in nursing. Now, I didn't get on here just to whine and complain. I have a solution. Let's truly focus on the missing middle. Affordable townhomes and duplexes going up in our backyard is a worthy sacrifice for the greater good of our community and affordability. I'm asking city leadership to not upzone in a hasty and presumptuous way, as if you know just whose backyard you are impacting, but in a responsible and common sense way that does not have single-family homes abutting five-story apartment complexes. And we all know these apartment complexes will be popular among young professional, um, people walking to breweries, not, um, low-income families. Please ensure the missing middle intensity zones are a buffer between low and high zones. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Neer, who will be followed by Adrian Dent. Charles, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I'm Charles Neer. I live at 310 Chestnut Street. And I'm calling about the proposed rezoning of 1206 Carlton Avenue. I think that's under consideration for discussion tonight. What do you do when a proceeding goes on and you disagree with, with the outcome? Well, in a judicial proceeding, you appeal to the higher court, uh, maybe the Supreme Court. In this case, I'm appealing to you like you're the Supreme Court, because you are the decision-maker regarding this, uh, rezoning. Three years ago, there came a petition to rezone the same property, and it was, um, for six units on the property. And the City Planning Commission and, you know, the City Council eventually decided that that's not a good thing. And they were, they rejected that, um, petition. Now, the petitioner has come back again, uh, asking to rezone the property, increasing the density from six to eight, and not increasing the parking, which is one of the key components. I think there are three. The three components are density, traffic problems, and parking. So anyway, they made the right decision, and so now I'm asking you to do due consideration and consider everything about this. I think you should go back and talk to the counselors who are on the board when they, when they said, no, that's not a good thing. If it's not a good thing then, why would it be good now? Additionally, you know, you could do some additional personal research. You could get in your car and ride over there and take a look at it. You could also, you know, ask questions of the city planners if you have specific questions. If you do full consideration, thoughtful consideration, um, and, and due diligence, I think that you will come up with the right decision ultimately. It's my hope that your decision would be one of two things. First, that you agree with the previous city council that turned down the request. You, you basically reaffirm that decision and, uh, both the City Council and the Planning Commission. Or second, you, you make another decision, which is, hey, maybe it's worth considering doing something, but not this much. You could, you could approve the, um, decision to rezone from R2 to R3, and, and you could nix or say no to the S U P. That would limit the amount of units could put on this place, the five units. That would greatly mitigate all three important factors. And then, and then basically, it could work out for everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adrian Dent, who will be followed by Nancy Carpenter. If you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Adrian, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Adrian Dent. I live in Charlottesville on Todd Avenue. I'm coming tonight to talk about something that I've emailed a lot of people about over the last few months. And it's a rather arcane detail with so many pressing and important things occurring in the city. But, um, I haven't gotten an answer, so here I am. My concern pertains to an end-of-watch announcement, which is, um, put out by Tyler Hahn and the Public Information Officer of the police during National Police Week, um, which is in May. These end-of-watch announcements commemorate officers who have died in the line of duty. And this one was for an officer named Meredith Thomas, who died in April of 1917. The announcement goes on to detail, um, how Meredith Thomas was murdered while apprehending two men stealing a ham from a warehouse, which I think was somewhere off of Water Street or near the Main Street. These gentlemen were accused of murder and convicted and were executed in Richmond by electric chair. There was an allow, an 11-hour appeal to the governor with no avail. So from, in my mind, there are huge question marks around, um, the, the failures of justice in this process. I think in a time when deep truths of injustice and oppression and erasure of stories is, um, you know, being more spoken and more witnessed, um, my question and concern, which I've brought to Major Mooney, Chief Brackney, um, City Council, I believe, um, Mr. Boyle, you received my email, though it may not have gone through, is, um, is this a message, are these truths that we want to be sharing? I understand celebrating or acknowledging an officer who died in the line of duty, but when there are huge question marks around two gentlemen who were murdered also, in addition to this police officer, one especially who, um, claimed he had nothing to do with the murder, and his, uh, claim was substantiated by the other person. And they must have had a lawyer to file this 11-hour appeal. I just wonder, is this something that the city wants to be putting out year after year? And will the message be different next year? I just would like an answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Carpenter, who will be followed by Katrina Turner. Nancy, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, and thank you, counsel, for allowing me to address you this evening. I wanted to acknowledge that, uh, this is the Right to Counsel pilot program, I believe is now operative, and I appreciate that program. However, I hope that as you deliberate, um, on, you know, upcoming budget, that you will look at putting, um, additional funds to that program. Uh, I know that they wanted to try and have two attorneys available for folks at all times, not just, uh, to the end of this eviction moratorium, but also, you know, going forward, even whenever we ever get out of this pandemic or endemic, or what kind of emic you want to call it, that there will still be a need for Right to Counsel ongoing. And that, um, I would like to see also, you know, City Council contact, um, Delegate Hudson's office. They'll be in special session over the next week or so. And, um, lobby her to, to, uh, sign on, create, or whatever it is, a statewide, you know, Right to Counsel program for everyone, um, in Virginia going forward. It's very interesting that, uh, our local CRHA could actually, if they had the funding, probably put several hundred more vouchers on the street, and what a difference that would make to a lot of folks here. And so there's a lot of, um, I think lobbying, and I think you'll be looking pretty soon at your legislative packet. And I, hopefully, that you will look at some of the legislation, um, that's coming out of the state as far as, um, Right to Counsel, or, you know, as far as some stronger tenant rights, um, bills that might be coming forward and that you'll support them. Now, very quickly, I want to pivot to another topic. I didn't talk about, um, the land use, uh, plan that you all are considering. But as a tenant, I wanted to say that I took a little bit of offense at what some of the NIMBYs were saying, at your last public hearing about how tenants are not, um, productive to the city. And I'd like to say, oh, nay, nay, that's not true, that, um, there are quite a few tenants that are very, you know, long-term, and not necessarily everybody wants the white picket fence. That's something that's been sold to us for a long time and has its own problem, you know, when you really look at it. But, um, I just did want to say that, that tenants do provide a lot of rich, history-rich background, rich involvement, um, in this community from all walks of life. And, you know, we do need the type of housing and, you know, low income can be somebody that's on a $783 a month SSDI or a $1,000 a month Social Security. And that, you know, these high-density, hopefully, there'll be some creative thinking on how this gets done, but there will be some, um, high-density, uh, availability and residential options that will help the, you know, help those folks to also have a good part and a good piece of the city. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katrina Turner. If you'd like to get in line, please go ahead and click the raise hand icon. Katrina, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Um, Katrina Turner, Charlottesville. Um, I'd just like to say, I listened and heard that I would be able to FOIA some of the records that I've been trying to get for so many years. But I've heard that, um, doing a FOIA now is gonna cost so much money that we're not gonna be able to afford doing FOIA. So, um, I would just like to know, you know, that about the FOIA, has the amount gone up? Has it been raised to an amount that I'm not gonna be able to afford to get it? Something I've been trying to get for over five years? I'd also like to say this is not just about a video that the chief of police claims that she viewed. It's not just about a video. That's a lie that she told, that she's been telling since she got to this city. I need to know where she got any information about a video, not just the video. She also accused me of accusing an officer of lying about an injury. Where did she get that accusation from? Where did all of this false information that she has put on paper come from? Is what I need to know. City Council, when I asked, after I received the letter about the video that she viewed, I asked for a letter stating that she did not view a video, that she made a mistake, and that she did not view a video, that she only saw, saw a photo of my son's arrest. I have not gotten that letter yet. But what I do have right now is two pieces of evidence in this case. One, that the chief of police saw a video, and another one that she saw a photo. So something needs to be corrected. And as I said, this is not about a video. This is about the chief of police lying on me. Okay, and I need to know where these lies came from. I asked to talk to a special investigator. There's so many things that I have been denied. And I need to know why. And I need to know if the records that's gonna be FOIA are the original records, the ones the night my son was arrested, all the little messages from the police officers that night. This is the information that I need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Dreyfus. Emily, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, and thank you all for all of your hard work. I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. One is related to the future land use map. And, um, I would just like to center the, the opportunities that the city needs to provide to its residents. We have a strong history that, um, shows segregation and lack of opportunity primarily for black residents. And we have the opportunity now to turn that around. And as Ms. Carmelita Wood said when she was interviewed by the reporter, it's not too late. So I really hope that you all will work hard to move the future land use map. Or another solution, if the affordable housing overlay looks like it will provide robust opportunities for low-income people, then, um, I would support that and hope it will be moved quickly along. We all need to work together to overcome the history, and even the more recent history, what's happening in most of the black neighborhoods with very rapid displacement, and the worries of what's to come due to the COVID evictions, moratorium expiring. These are things that we all need to work together to address. Secondly, I wanted to share the information about the Legal Aid Justice Center's Rent Relief Program. We are up and running as of today, and I wanted to offer the phone number to people who are seeking rent relief. And this would, uh, be support for helping to gather all the documentation that's required for the state program. We have two rent relief assisters who are helping now. Um, one is Rayz Wabowski, and another is Gustavo Espinoza. They are both Spanish-speaking. They can be reached at 434-326-4305. And, uh, by email at rentrelief@justice4, that's the numeral four, all.org. Thank you for your attention. I look forward to working with you to improve the land use opportunities in the city.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've heard from eight speakers so far. If anyone else would like to address counsel, now is the time. Please click the raise hand icon to get in line. We have eight additional slots. Our next speaker is Wonday Johnson. You're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take the chance to thank you formally for the additional funding that you awarded to our internship program, us being FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for that funding. We really appreciated it. And also just take the time to invite you all to the graduation ceremony we will be hosting on Friday, the 13th. I believe the time is 5:30. I will follow up with an email so that you guys can join us if you are able to. Thank you.
And one last call for any hands. Please click the raise hand icon. I don't see any other hands, Mayor Walker.
All right, thank you. Counselors, any comments?
I was just going to come out on the FOIA piece. Maybe that's something we can follow up with in a future meeting just to explain to the public a little more about what types of requests will incur a charge. I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but the scope, what I understand, Ms. Turner's request, I don't know is going to trigger a significant cost, if any. I will say that there certainly have been requests that have been made of the city that are very complex and can require a tremendous amount of staff time. And that's really where some of those calculations could play in. And so I just, it would be helpful, Mr. Boils, if we can just, next meeting, just provide a little bit more clarity to the public on how that process works and how those charges are calculated. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only other thing I would say is related to the additional funding for the work that Legal Aid is doing. It's my understanding that the county, we were pending, knowing what funding they were going to also be providing to that program. Is that right? Because last we asked, I think, Mr. Boils, you said that they were considering it, but it hadn't been voted on by the board of supervisors.
And that is still, I think they're still, they still have not voted. I mean, it's not slowing down our work that we're doing. It will just expand what the Legal Aid Justice Center will be able to do.
I just want to, this is just a regional issue that doesn't really have borders that are that clear. So that's why I think it's important that both jurisdictions are participating. Thank you.
We hope so also.
I have a comment about the New York Times article and the conversation around that. I think it's important, I've been hearing a lot of this, and I have commented on it before, to look at everything in a historic context and also understand. I think everyone needs to probably go through the communities they think are just full of Black people because they're not. And it goes back to, you know, that when people hear low income or lower AMI, they equate Black only. We do have a significant number of our citizens in the neighborhoods who are Black, but a significant number of Native Black people from Charlottesville have been pushed out of the city. And because of the work like IRC has been doing, when you go to a West Haven or Greenstone on Fifth, there's not just Black people in those areas. There's a significant number of refugees, Hispanic families, you know. So I think that's one thing that's very important. The other thing is expanding, I guess, our understanding of equity a bit more. And just because one person is able, the citizen used her husband being Filipino and able to work his way out of something. And I always find those kind of stories very interesting because one of the things that have happened, that has happened to me most of my life, is people telling me that I could be the person to make it out. And if I stopped doing certain things, I would be successful, as they. It is not easy for any one person to make it out, but there are always exceptions. And exceptions doesn't mean that the majority of people have the opportunities to make it out. So not assuming whose backyard you are impacting. When you go through other neighborhoods through the city, you do see other races. But the majority of people who live in our city and who live in wealthier areas are white, and no one can deny that. And it will require us to actually make what, I guess, the New York Times article was attempting to say, to make that untrue, we would actually need to have more diversity everywhere. And you also have to take into account that Black people from Charlottesville made up over 50% of the population after the Civil War and what our numbers are here today. And that's not just from people saying, oh, I'm going to go somewhere. I know a significant number of people that I grew up with didn't think that this was a place that they could have vibrant lives, that they wanted to raise children in. And so they left with the hopes of finding that. And I know the next argument is those things happen everywhere. But as we have our discussions about attracting people, we should also be having the discussions about what has happened historically to push people out of the community. So just the, there are always stories associated with how someone, I own a house in Charlottesville. I would not be able to buy a house today. That is the bottom line. So people can't say, oh, she did it, so you can do it. That's not how it works. And I think if many of you think about your house, their own homes, the cost of it, I'm thinking of someone, Counselor Snook, how long you've been in the area? I don't know how long you've lived in that house, but what the value of your house is today versus when you brought it and how practically impossible, if you and your wife sold it, some low-income family would be able to buy it unless you all were willing to sell it for less than its worth. So those are the type of things that I don't think are, you know, we are really thinking a lot about when we talk about the land use map and future zoning changes. Any other? All right. So what time is it? So we'll keep going. First action item we have is ordinance approving the rezoning application at 1206 Carlton Avenue, per recommendations of the Planning Commission. And it's the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Matt O'Leary, Neighborhood Development Services. Both the six and seven will be kind of discussed tonight. You'll be reviewing an ordinance for rezoning and a resolution for a special use permit for proposed development at 1206 Carlton Avenue. No action will be taken tonight. City Council moves to deny the rezoning. If City Council moves to deny the rezoning, no action is needed on the S U P as it is dependent on the change to the zoning classification. If City Council moves to approve the applicant's request, City Council can move these actions to their next meeting after tonight's discussion. Management Services, Inc., represented by Justin Schimpf of Schimpf Engineering, has submitted two applications, ZM 21-00001 and SP 21-00004. These requests are needed for the owner to develop an eight-unit apartment building on the subject property. The first step of the proposal is to rezone the subject property from R2, low-density, two-family residential to R3, medium residential. No proffers are being proposed as part of the rezoning request. A rezoning of the subject property would change the buyright density from approximately four-dwelling units per acre, DUA, to 21 DUA. Although this is a little misleading as DUA is not used in the R2 and R1 districts to determine density. In these districts, unit counts are used. Under the current zoning, a one-two-family dwelling unit could be built on the subject property. At 21 DUA, the subject property would accommodate five units by right. As part of the S U P, the applicant is requesting the density be increased from 21 DUA to 31 DUA. The applicant is also requesting that the side setbacks be modified from 13 feet to 8 feet. The application materials indicate the height of the building would be approximately 40 feet, but no greater than the R3 allotted 45 feet. The subject property has frontage on Carlton Avenue and would propose, the proposed development would utilize the rear alley to access Bainbridge Street. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 13th for both the rezoning and S U P request. There is a typo in the City Council's S U P memo that mentions August 16th, the Planning Commission held it. That's wrong. It was July 13th was the correct date for both the rezoning and S U P. At that meeting, the Planning Commission expressed concern with overflow parking, infrastructure improvements, and wanted to know from the applicant what the target rent range would be. The applicant stated it would be 1,100 to 1,500 range for the mix of one- and two-bedroom units within the development. The Planning Commission also stated that this type of housing, the missing middle, would support more housing opportunities in the neighborhood. During the July 13th public hearing, 10 members of the public spoke. Many of the speakers were concerned with overflow parking and that the density was too high for the neighborhood. Safety for pedestrians on Carlton Avenue, disruption to the character of the neighborhood, and traffic were also major concerns for many of the speakers. Other speakers were in favor of the rezoning and the S U P. They felt the scale was consistent with the neighborhood and the development provide the type of housing the city desperately needs. Staff received only a few emails regarding this project, and they were forwarded to Planning Commission and City Council. The main concerns noted inadequate parking on the subject property. Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval on both the rezoning request and the S U P application. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also present tonight and has prepared a short presentation.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions? Or you want to wait until after Mr. Schimpf's presentation?
Wait till after. I would like to wait till after.
So would I.
All right. Thank you all. Justin Schimpf, engineer for the project. A quick sound check. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you. We are here tonight to present this rezoning application from R2 to R3. You've heard the details. Some of you all were at the Planning Commission's public hearing. I'm going to go through the same presentation for those who didn't hear some of those details. And I also have some additional information that came out in context of the questions asked the Planning Commission that I want to put before the council members tonight to hopefully answer some of the questions. The site is located, many of you know where it is, but if you're not familiar, it's on Carlton Avenue. I think of it near Cathy Shopping Center. I'm not sure it's still called that. But basically Carlton runs between where the shopping center is, where there's the arcade place, there's Chinese food, laundromat. Then Carlton runs up into Belmont. Over basically the end of my picture here is Moss on the far left. So that particular section, interesting mix. And you can see from this photo, there's apartment buildings, small apartments, larger buildings. There's auto repair shop, body shops, the single-family homes, a pretty broad variety of zoning and uses on this stretch. Next slide, please. Here's the site plan. So the premise here is we have a small building. It's 26 by 94. So it's essentially about the size of two single-family houses stacked side, you know, back to back. The stairwell in the center is about the scale of the house, being three stories. One of the key things is our entrance would be on, coming in, one-way in only, which would essentially clears up the safety issues. There was talk about the safety getting in and out of that road. And we, Traffic Engineer and us all agreed that the one-way entrance really fixed that issue. And that was the safe way to the site. You would leave out the alley in the back. So that was an item that was maybe a little bit in question with the 2017 plan. And between now and then, we cleared up legal access to the alley and things like that that were a concern previously. This plan is a little different than the previous in that it's, prior was six, two-bedroom units. It is now four two-bedroom units and four one-bedrooms. The same number of bedrooms as the prior application. However, it is just two more units and one additional parking space than we had previously. We've heard about parking, and this is a concern. And we've heard that we needed two parking spaces per unit plus guests. And I have to say, that's just not something that, if you're in my business, if you're into planning land development, and you're looking at a lot, this in the city, and this sort of, this area's got transit opportunities, biking, pedestrian, you really, you just shouldn't do that, honestly. It's going backwards in the type of housing we're trying to create for the future. You know, we don't need to be creating car dependency opportunities in a location like this. And so that's why we understand this, you know, questions about that among folks. Neighborhood, unnecessary to have more parking. Really inappropriate in many ways to have more parking than we show in this plan. Next slide, please. So here's the, just a rough example of the building would look like. It's kind of residential-type construction, but we might make some vertical siding elements and horizontal. And then if you see from the side elevation, it's basically two structures attached with a stairwell. There is a requirement in the R3 for a covered amenity space, which we have a small rooftop terrace for. Next slide, please. So that would be parking. And so the summary of the Planning Commission questions that we thought were particularly important to get to. One, interesting statistics. In this, in this block, 33.9% of renters do not have access to a vehicle. So the idea of needing, you know, two parking spaces per unit really doesn't match with this, sort of, who is in this district and who's looking for apartments. We also know from studies and places, this is remote as Scottsville, that in these types of developments, they average something like 1.3 parking spaces per unit is needed. So if you have 1.3 in Scottsville, certainly one is sufficient in Belmont. So again, we feel that parking is completely adequate for this. The other thing that came up, there was some discussion about with the affordable housing and why we didn't have affordable housing proffered. And there's two things in this. One is, this building is intended to be a simple building. It's a simple box. It is not intended to be luxury-type housing. The developer of this is not into that. They're trying to build a simple structure with moderate-priced housing. We have at times, and other people have, as you can see in the stream, proposed additional affordable housing above what's required on 3412. We had a lengthy conversation with the attorney about this a couple of weeks ago. And the problem with all these things is they've been done, but they don't really include the right enforceability. Also, at times, I think you have not gotten perhaps what you thought, not in these particular instances I'm showing you. But for example, the length of time, there's no good definition of the standard operating procedure for affordable housing on these projects. And so the city staff has a very difficult time trying to go through actual facts and enforce regulations that frankly weren't so well-defined at the time. I don't think it's the fault of anybody who proposed these applications. It's just been a, honestly, very complicated situation to navigate over the past number of years. There's been a lot of turnover with city staff. There's been sort of a discovery of a standard operating procedure that we didn't know about for a period of time. And that's really why we have not proposed it. If we have talked to the city attorney, and they're working on a kind of a document to be used as more of a template that everyone agrees on for these kind of projects, but we don't have that yet. The nature of our project really is an affordable one. So I mean, the 65% FMRs, we're not very far above that. Our rents would effectively be at the 80% AMI level, which may even qualify for vouchers now, I think, as the policy has been updated. So I think we'll go to the next slide. One more example. This was our proffer, our affordable housing proffer in the last one, which is we'd have one unit at the 80% AMI for 10 years. And that was all it said. And that was thought to be okay at the time. And then we've learned since then that really needs to be a lot more into it, make it an actual enforceable proffer that means something. So we are certainly in the business of trying to create opportunities for housing and affordable housing. But we feel like there has to be a better way to do it than what's been done, especially for these small projects. Next slide, please. Just a quick zoning overview of the property. And I'm sure I'm short of time, so I won't go too much longer. But here's the interesting thing about this. You'll notice that our But here's the interesting thing about this. You'll notice that our little sliver is known as R two. It's the only one. If we go to the next slide, this is the current zoning map. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the context of the properties around us. Go back one slide. Build, build one back one slide please. Yes. So quickly, if you look on the bottom right, you have the structures basically numbered one through seven plus eight. And you can look at the pictures and, uh, our most immediate structures are one, two, and four, which are, I think, both six-unit buildings. Maybe number one is more. That'd be like eight units. Number two is definitely a six-unit. And then the twelve oh eight Carlton is a commercial zone that actually has a, uh, twenty space parking lot immediately adjacent to our site. So really the nature of what's around us is very much, uh, a mixture of small apartments and we're proposing to be consistent with that. Uh, next slide please. In the history of the zoning on this, uh, what you'll see in this, this is the older zoning maps, nineteen forty-nine, nineteen fifty-eight, was originally B one, was zoned to R three industrial. Uh, next slide please. Uh, with R three up until nineteen ninety-one even, it's remained R three. And then was part of this, next slide please, was basically part of the downzoning that happened, uh, I think it was in two thousand and five. So you'll see there was, we, we, we had basically discovered there was effort, the time to find parcels that weren't developed and basically downzone them to reduce what I guess we perceive as the impact of the neighborhood at that time. So this is one parcel that was actually singled out and downzoned, um, which is, you know, maybe consistent with what the philosophy was in two thousand and five. But I think we've all come to learn that that was, has not served the broader community well. It's served the slice of the community well, downzoning and focusing on single family, but certainly not everyone. And so we were trying to get this back to really where it was and make the project that's more meaningful to more people rather than just a duplex or a single family lot. Uh, and such a, such a great location for folks who might live, who might work nearby, could walk, could bike, uh, would not have to rely on transportation, which is also a tremendous saving for folks who are lower income. Uh, next slide please. Back to our site plan. I believe it's up for any questions, but that is the summary of our project. Um, we do know it was similar to the one that was denied, but things have changed. I think things have evolved from two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. And I think that's what we're looking at here is the reaction to the planning commission's review, the changes to how the future land is now being developed now. And what we've learned between twenty seventeen and now really points to this being the, the right sort of project. This location, it really gives the city in a way to get more density in a way that's not creating, you know, uh, large scale apartment buildings. So uh, if you have, if you have to answer any questions you have, uh, thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Counselors, questions?
I was wondering, Matt, could you just step through again? I'm sorry, because I read through this several times, just trying to understand each stage of this. Could you just go through the number of, of units potential, both where we are today, where we'll be with just the rezoning and where we will be with the special use permit, just both, not just a D U A, but actual unit count, just so I understand.
Yes. So as it stands now, being an R two, you could build a two-family dwelling. So the lot's not big enough to split. So a two fam, our code, we don't use the terms like duplexes and that. We use the term single-family attached and two-family. Single-family attached is what you think of when you share a common property wall. Um, so each unit has on its own piece of property, but they're attached. A two-family dwelling would be two families living on one lot. So as this is zoned, this is a lot of record. So probably wouldn't even, I'm not sure if it'd be, be big enough to create the size of a lot, but as a lot of record, you could build right now, you could build a whole building permit and build a two-family dwelling. You could have two families on there, which would require by the code, one lot per unit, or what, excuse me, one parking spot per unit. So current code, uh, two-family attached, but two units, two parking spots. If it was rezoned to R three without a special use, you, the max units you could build would be five. You could build five, um, units and you would need, if they were, depending on if they were one bedroom or two bedroom, you know, one and two bedroom, that would be one parking spot per unit. Once you get above two bedrooms, your parking requirement increases. The caveat to that is there is a slice, a very thin slice, uh, spike strip on the south side that is zoned R two that's not owned by the owner. And there's a code section that says, that dictates your setback. That's the other reason they're asking for a change in the setback in their S U P. So even if it was rezoned without the, um, special use permit, that part of that special use permit is to adjust the side setback, you'd have a much smaller building footprint. So I don't know what that building footprint would be for five units, but you just can't change your setbacks without something else. So, so if, if it got rezoned, um, the developer would need to look at what their building footprint is, if it could accommodate actually five units. But five units would be your max you could build through rezoning. And the special use they're asking for eight units. That was a long-winded way to answer your question, counselor.
I appreciate that answer because it actually filled in some blanks for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the main differences, Matt, in your opinion, between what was presented to the council in two thousand and eighteen versus now are, how, how would you summarize the change, the differences besides we have additional units? We have an egress and ingress plan that's different. Go ahead. I'm sorry. You tell me.
So the, the main difference really is the two additional units. The, um, the ingress egress is actually very similar to what was seen back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, utilizing the back alley. Um, I don't know if the circulation pattern was the same. I'd look at my notes, but the, that proposal always was going to utilize that back alley. So it's really, it really is the, um, number of units. I think the, and the applicant can speak to this, but I think the bedroom count was, is, is still very similar. So it's a little hard when you start to talk about density because we talk about density as units and not bedroom counts. So you could have a smaller number of units, but you can still have the four unrelated. So you could have a smaller number of units, but more bedrooms.
Yeah. And he kind of outlined that they're both twelve bedrooms, depending on how you do the math.
Yeah.
Any other? So I have a question, uh, just, um, back to, and I watched the planning commission presentation too. And, um, you mentioned then what you mentioned tonight, and I heard, um, Ms. Robertson explanation of the city not being able to enforce. And I understand that, um, at least in item six, you can proffer, we can't add request. And then in seven, maybe we can request, um, but it may be not depend, be able to be dependent upon the proffer. So a little confusing, but, um, I think my thought when I heard you say at the, you know, when I reviewed the meeting and tonight is, um, part of the enforcement piece is to ensure that people are doing, um, what they say they would do. And based on your, um, examples of, um, four other projects, one, I think that's not, one was the only one that wasn't, um, that's not in play right now. And, um, how long that you've been in, um, the business that if a developer decides to proffer, you know, make an offer for their development, then the enforcement piece, which should be coming, as you stated, shouldn't be a reason to not include it because you are saying yourself, um, that, um, you may be interested in doing things differently than other developers. So that was my thought then and tonight. Um, also I heard the, um, community's concerns about parking and I just have the same thought that I have all the time. I know that there is, um, a community that we want to live in and that we want to strive for that community. However, we're not there yet. And even in my neighborhood, um, you know, you may have, um, uh, like my next door neighbors, there are maybe five or six cars. Um, and that one house, only one driveway, the rest is on the street and we're on a hill. Um, and so I think the parking concerns and the impact that it has, um, on, um, the neighborhood overall has to be, um, you know, considered because right now people are still driving and it's very likely that, um, those two bedroom units will probably have more than one car. And I know I heard Peter on there talk about the walkability of that particular community, but there were also people who talked about the community being a food desert. So at some point you have to drive, but even if the cars, um, if people are not driving their cars all the time, they are parked somewhere. And so, um, that was another thought I had. And I ha- have some questions on staff. I didn't, I wasn't able to watch this, um, until this weekend, but, um, the questions that came up about the sidewalks, sidewalk, crosswalk, and, um, I was a little bit kind of taken aback that the planning commission thought that if it were possible to put sidewalks in those areas and a crosswalk, because it talked about there has had to be a sidewalk to, I guess, the crosswalk to link to, um, is the way I understood that. Um, there were a lot of conversations about that wouldn't be a developer's, um, duty and the city needed to do its job. And my comments surrounding that is, um, the feasibility of a project, which is something that we have been talking about since the West Second Street project. And there is one, um, level of thought that seems to be consistent that the, um, city will benefit just by the increase in, um, you know, real estate taxes. Um, in the West Second Street case, it was someone, you know, people walking downtown, um, to, you know, Mills tax, people coming to visit lodging tax, all of those things. And so I get that, but, um, and I made this comment with Harris Street, the developers are talking about feasibility. We never ask them any questions about what that means in terms of profit for them. And I know I've been told quite a few times, that's apparently not our business. Okay. But what I don't understand is, um, how can they ask us for more, but then we think that something is, you know, necessary for a neighborhood and especially hopefully for the new, um, community members, um, or the community members who are current community members who are relocated, they are new community members, that if we're talking about, um, walkability, that we want them to be able to walk somewhere and be safe. And I just don't understand how we, um, think that, um, that is not something that is acceptable to tie in to a request when a, um, developer is asking us to build more than they can build by right.
I suppose some of that, I wasn't realizing we were going to get into the discussion part, I guess, yet, but, um, I went back and watched the two times we discussed this. One of them was very brief, um, when it came to council two, three years ago, just to remember a lot of the concerns and some of them had to do with just the comp plan and then what it takes to engage properly for a rezoning request. But a lot of it came back to this piece that Ms. May Walker is talking about with the infrastructure and the sidewalk. And aside from the rezoning, a special use permit is, is asking for something, and she said that's more. And that was a highlight along with obviously the parking concerns that I think continue to still exist. And so I was hopeful that we might be at a place where we're more holistically addressing, especially when some of the argument is we don't need all these parking places because people are walking. Well, if they're walking, they're going to need better infrastructure. And I don't, I, I understand that the city has to play a role in that, but there's another project on Stribling that developers certainly recognizing that a role they're going to have to play if we're going to be able to get to where we need to with the infrastructure to support the development, the end of that. Um, and the other thing I said at that time, and I will reinforce is that outside of this rezoning request, when I look at the properties that are also along this road and what can be, what is, what will be for sure developed by right at great scale, I can't help but have that weigh in because this is a decision-making point that we have, whereas a lot of those are going to just happen organically on their own in ways that we may not like. Um, and I think it's going to create a lot of stress, um, this specific neighborhood. Um, and so that has been there. And so I, I agree. I think it's important that we understand the impact and what can mitigate those impacts. Um, and for me, that has to do again with the walkability and what can we do to further support the walkability if we're going to be allowing for additional density. Um, and then obviously the parking continues to be a concern, but that's why I feel like if, if we have to figure out one way or the other, um, something to, to ease, I think, some of that tension for the, for the community.
I'd like to sort of build on, on some of what Heather was just talking about. It seems to me that if we decide that we want as a city priority, as a city decision, that if we want to, um, intentionally increase the density in that area of Belmont, that we ought to have a plan for how we deal with that density in terms of other infrastructure, whether the infrastructure is provided by the developer or whether it's provided by the city at our expense. Uh, and as I look at that area, the first thing that concerns me is that the streets are all pretty narrow. Uh, the lots, most of them are pretty close together. Uh, and, and that's fine. Um, but if we're going to have, uh, if we're going to have close together lots and, uh, and an emphasis on walkability, then we also ought to be having emphasis on sidewalks and sightlines on the roads that we've got. And a lot of the roads not only are narrow, but they kind of twist and turn a little bit. And I, I would just like to, to think about whether there are things that the city would recognize that we would want to do in that area. First, because I recognize as Heather does, the, the likelihood that there will be some fairly significant development on some available land, uh, in that area. And by significant development, it seems like we could be talking about a hundred units or more, and we're not just talking about six or eight or ten. Uh, and so the first question I have is whether it would be possible, and this is not so much for the developer as much as for city staff, uh, to, would it be, what would need to happen for us to think about what that area of Belmont, uh, would need if we were going to be increasing density the way that we expect density to be increased? We just said, there's sort of a, we talk occasionally about small area plans. I don't know what actually goes into a small area plan that we don't already know about the Belmont area, but I haven't seen anything that, that really talks about what we think we want in that area. We, we sometimes joke about downtown Belmont and some of the neighbors right there get very angry with us when we talk about downtown Belmont because they don't want a downtown Belmont. They want a residential neighborhood. I just wonder what, whether we've given any serious thought at the, at the city level or N D S level as to, as to what we, what we want there.
Is it? Good evening, councilors. Um, Councilor Snook, are you talking in terms of infrastructure needs or?
In part, yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, I think.
Sidewalks and streets and.
Yeah, that's, that's part of, uh, uh, current planning process, you know, uh, and usually, um, when you are proposing a development, uh, uh, this is, um, uh, universal application all over the country. You know, you look at the application, then you assess the surrounding infrastructure, whether the capacity to support that, including the impact it's supposed to have, or it may have uh, on the environment, uh, as you review the application. You know, but to answer your question, uh, it's part of the planning process you are looking, we are working on right now, unless there is a small area plant there. And then, uh, uh, on the other hand, uh, uh, the amenities need, which is infrastructure, you know, are usually reviewed as part of, um, as part of the application process to ensure that, uh, if the development is approved, it's not going to have a negative impact on the surrounding area.
So can I assume that you all have looked at this project? So can I assume that you all have looked at this project? And have concluded that it is not going to um, suppose any infrastructure problems? Sidewalks, streets, et cetera.
Yeah, I think sidewalk was discussed by the planning commission, but uh, we have comments and uh. Uh, Matt can uh, um.
Yes, councillor.
Clarify that to some point, but usually appropriate city department like Public Works, Public uh, Public Utilities. Parks and Recreation, they usually review. Um, the amenities uh, component of the review process and then provide comment to the staff plan. Matt.
Yes, uh, Alex and councillor, is that in the staff report that went to planning commissions, you have. The standard of review, uh, looking at when you're, and there's different standards of view for the rezoning, different standards of review for the the SUP. And different departments, um, as the director said, Public Works looks at it, engineering, traffic. Parks, but there's a a specific section under in the SUP that speaks to infrastructure, any impact on infrastructure. And when that was reviewed and that covers public infrastructure, not only utilities, fire, um, police, but also infrastructure like. Sidewalks, streets and traffic. And there the, when those were reviewed, there was found to be no impacts at this scale.
But I guess the question that I have is, we have um. There have been a number, a couple, at least one other project that was within a couple of blocks there. Uh, that we looked at just within the last year, there are other lots in that area that are also subject to being developed. Perhaps for another six to eight to ten units, but then there's also this one area a few blocks away. That we can reasonably expect if it's gonna get developed, it's gonna get developed with potentially a hundred units or more. Uh, at some point, I, and I'm asking per- perhaps not so much. For the the issue for this particular project, but for our future analysis. If we think we're gonna be looking at a hundred, a hundred and fifty more units in that area, what do we need to be thinking about now? So that it becomes possible to make that work.
Um, this is. Go ahead.
If if, um, this is Jack Dawson, the city engineer and the traffic engineer, um, Mr. Duncan is not here today. To address this, but just to speak to the issue, sort of master planning from the transportation level. We have the um, bicycle and pedestrian uh, master plan, uh, which is from twenty fifteen. Um, and to get to your point about how we integrate new development with that scheme, you know, and looking at that two hundred seventeen page document. Uh, as you were speaking about this, Carlton is look, uh, identified as a local uh, road. Or ro- local uh, bicycle and pedestrian pathway, which connects to the closest arterial. Uh, or not even arterial, but collector at both Carlton Road and then at um, Avon. And that's what the plan says and the plan identifies the priority, uh, bicycle and pedestrian. Pathways per neighborhood and that's sort of where it's, it stops, um, and so we've. Public Works and and NDS has identified this sort of issue where it doesn't integrate with what kind of project. And and how it ties private development on a per project basis into that plan. And again, Amanda Poncy, the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator is is much more well versed in how these things integrate, but her role is mostly to look at. What the plan mandates for each individual project and sort of provide recommendations for integrating it into the master plan. So we have been working on sort of building that out to a more um. Uh, data geographic GIS based system to to sort of point out. Recommendations, but at this point, it's really limited to recommendations beyond what the code mandates for sidewalk frontage and things like that and. ADA accessibility and um, again, Mr. Duncan looks at the the. Traffic and has had discussions on this in regards to the traffic impacts, which is the, the still the primary driver from the the code driven standpoint of how he looked at these things.
I g- I guess where I'm, where I'm thinking about here and not 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 thinking very clearly perhaps is. That we've got these small projects that where the same issues keep coming up and. The analysis is, well, this project is not the straw that's gonna break the camel's back. But if we assume that there will be a straw soon that will break the camel's back. Should we begin thinking now before we get to that point? To how we're going to accommodate the growth that we reasonably expect is gonna happen? And what would that look like if we were to do so? Again, this is not trying to put the burden on Mr. Shimp and his project specifically, I'm just trying to think about. How we should be thinking about this.
Could I jump in with a quick comment about this?
Sure.
Thank you, so to answer the first question, you already do, so as an example, on River Road, you did site plan over there, a special use permit. The master plan, the transportation master, master plan, Mr. Dawson spoke of. Called out for a certain street with a certain sidewalk configuration, so those things were integrated into the site plan, because that project came up along corridor that had basically identified plan. And I would expect the same thing here if there was such a plan, so that essentially that master plan guides the doc, um. Discussion, we submitted any kind of special use for a zoning, uh, the staff looks at that plan and tells us to comply with it essentially. There are cases where you can't or other things come up. On the sidewalks in question here, that's what it clears, everyone knows, the discussion with the planning commission was about coming across the street. From the Chestnut neighborhood, we have sidewalks on our side that get you all the way into Belmont, not an issue. There was a question of could we connect across the street and that road comes down at a pretty rough slope. And I don't think it's possible to build a sidewalk over there without substantial work, probably roadway condemnation. And that's where I think the discussion was sort of followed outside of the limits of this project. Adjacent to us, there was a small piece of sidewalk that needed to be fixed, certainly it would be appropriate for us to deal with that as part of this process. But we're talking about a project that would be wor- that would be more expensive than this land is worth, to try to tackle a sidewalk near the side of that street. And I think that's that's where the discussion, planning commission sort of went, well, that's a city thing. Because the scale and scope of it really didn't necessarily affect this property. Um, and that's why, there was discussion about it, but I think as a, a location that's networked in. This is a good location uh, for pedestrians and bicycle movements to get around to where they want to go. So just wanted to clear that up in in late with what sidewalks were in question for the comments previously.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, Mr. Shimp, I was not trying to work this into an argument that. That we should be making you do more, I'm thinking about what we should be doing. To to plan two years, three years, five years ahead, that's all.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
Yeah, if I may, just just address that because um, Mr. Shimp and and. Um, this is more transportation philosophy than it is uh, professional engineering, but there is an issue with. As as councillor Snook noted, the straw that breaks the camel's back is lots of small projects, sidewalks are very expensive to build. Um, in a, in a retro situation where you already have street with, there's typically a reason there wasn't a sidewalk there. And it's hard to find the space, especially as permitting or uh, permitting, environmental, storm art, all of these things. Grow um, as time goes on and so it it probably is not feasible to um. For developers looking at building eight units or sixteen bedrooms or whatever it is, to address these needs. Um, councillor Hill mentioned Stribling, which that is a very expensive sidewalk over there. Um, and uh, yeah, the city probably can do a better job of. Entertaining how we do a- address these situations, like most things, it's not um. An issue just with the city of Charlotte, so obviously how you address pedestrian concerns. Um, on when we already have vehicular traffic situations and everything else, but um. I'm happy to have future discussions about that, but it is certainly a a a reasonable concern.
What kind of studies have been done to understand the potential traffic for what we could do by a right? In this area? If it's fully built out.
Uh, so, Mr. Duncan, traffic engineer is not on this call, but it's very generally and. And Mr. Shimp probably knows this um, better than I do since he coordinated with him, but it's essentially the the trip generation estimates that they look at. Um, for the, for this project.
Aside from Mr. Shimp's project, there hasn't been a more holistic assessment of this area, knowing. How much potent, how much development potential there is and will be. Um, because this is another thing, I like, like, can I echo some of Mr. Snook said, like, I, we, I think we need to be more proactive about these things because. It's coming and this is just one piece of it, but this is a piece that we can control and so that's where my head is going. Um, versus the things that we can't control, understanding the broader impact that all this will have on a pretty narrow corridor. Which you're telling us is obviously it's not a main road, I mean, it's it's a secondary road.
Uh, that's a good point, from the master planning standpoint, there's the Streets That Work document, which is what Mr. Shimp referenced. That was incorporated essentially into our standards and design manual and that looks at what's very traditional engineering perspective of. Or in transportation planning of what your street section looks like, with the right of way width is, how much width is provided for the lanes, bicycle. Uh, bicycle um, paths and sidewalks, whatever it is, given the corridor. Um, designation of primary and all the various things that Streets That Work expands on. What that doesn't incorporate is the Bike and Ped Master Plan, which is from twenty fifteen, which which is um. Has its own, and and I don't know the ins and outs of how that was developed, but has its own look at what are priority corridors for different modes of transportation. Those things don't necessarily integrate well into what a development has to look at for pedestrian um, travel and and. It it's complicated again by what's what's traditionally done, where people walk in streets that don't have sidewalks, because what else are they supposed to do? And what a reasonable engineering standard is and it's hard for the city to sort of broker some agreement with a developer that's. Building a modest development in, well, this, i- it's very hard to say this is better than the existing standard, is to build a substandard sidewalk or to. Do those sorts of things and meeting everything to the modern standard gets very expensive, but um. To that end, the Streets That Work Plan, I think, is a pretty, is a pretty functional plan and and it's been incorporated pretty well in the standards design manual, but again, that looks at. Your frontage and it looks less at integrating those things and um. The, again, Amanda Poncy, who's the bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, looks at a lot of that stuff, but she uses, she's working on six year old plan now. That prioritizes things per neighborhood, sort of corridors and doesn't link well with the sort of streets of, streets, streets that work designed. Um, standards that look more, if you're developing something, here's what you have to do, there's, there is sort of a missing link. I would say very generally between developing a single property and looking at the overall multimodal network and and how that gets done, but how you divide. How you divide responsibility for developing that or paying for that to facilitate this, um. I mean, that's the challenge of city plan, I mean, in a nutshell. I hope that answered your question somewhat.
I mean, it's hard because I just weigh in like, this is the type of, a lot, this is largely a type of infill we want, just a question of is this how much density you want and it's infill. And for me, the rezoning isn't where I'm having as much angst as I am about just the additional density and then. You know, minimizing setbacks and like, you know, what what does that mean for for this this parcel and and what surrounds it and so that's just kind of where. My my head is and where I do have some sympathy for the developers, when I listened to our conversation from three years ago, we were saying how. We needed to see what our comprehensive planning process was gonna uncover and. Three years later, here we are and we still don't have a strong answer and, you know, we're obviously working hard at it, it's a very hot topic, but um. You know, it's three years down the road and, you know, that argument to me is, is is kind of almost not even strong anymore because of how long. Um, this has even taken on on our end to get to that point, um. I would be curious to hear from some of the newer colleagues, um, who maybe aren't as emotionally invested because we haven't, we've already been through this decision once and um.
I guess to follow on the discussion, some of my thoughts are. You know, one, I definitely share the concerns about bike ped infrastructure in the area and I live in Belmont and it's certainly the case that. You know, people are gonna be driving in the interim and certainly throughout Belmont, you know, there's some challenges with parking. Um, that said, when I look at the project of what's been proposed, you know, I was just comparing it to some recent apartments that have come online. These are half the rent of some of the new apartments that have come online and then I compare it to some of the large. Single family homes that have been built in the area, um, that certainly visually and perhaps even from a parking um, and traffic standpoint. You know, may have a bigger impact or selling for well over six hundred thousand dollars if not more. Um, and so I look at this project and I live right by here, I walk past that area and um. You know, I just see it as an infill project and a vacant lot that um, this is the kind of workforce housing. That is not certainly the only solution to the affordable housing issue, but is one piece of it and I worry if we're not able to sort of find a way to. You know, have these kind of infill projects for workforce housing built, we're just gonna have units. Luxury rentals at twice the monthly rent or large, single family, many mansions selling for six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and given the fact that there's still eight parking spaces, um, you know, it's still addressing. Um, certainly at least at a minimum, a decent amount of parking, new parking needs that may be created, um, and just. Am inclined to see this as the kind of project in terms of workforce housing that we're just gonna need to be able to um. Support going forward if we want that as part of housing in the city, um, so that's sort of my thoughts, um, but that. Um, you know, I certainly share, there's, I think, a much beyond this project, a bigger concern about bike ped and. Um, parking in Belmont, especially some of the by right projects that were mentioned that are gonna be coming up. Um, but again, when it comes to this project, I think it's just sort of, one, still providing parking spaces. In a much lower impact than some of the by right stuff we're gonna see going forward while still providing workforce housing that again is below the median rent and. Half the monthly rent is some of these newer luxury apartments coming online.
Um, I mean, I like the idea of the infill project. I get, if from what I'm understanding, this is not triggering, the SUP process isn't triggering any proffers. Would this also, would this process trigger any contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund?
Also, no, that they don't trip the um. So the the applicant's not offering any proffers, which is part of the rezoning where you can offer proffers. The, uh, but they're not tripping section thirty four or twelve, which is the affordable housing requirement where you would provide you uh, units or pay into it.
And this is a section that is according to where the new land use map is. Is being looked at for upzoning, correct?
Well, we're not, we're definitely not to to zoning discussion with the comp plan, uh, just in more intense, uh. Yeah, I mean, that's, I would say more.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Intense, but not any zoning change at this point.
The land use map is looking at this area to increase the intensity. And recommending later for the rezoning stuff.
Under the, under the draft, let me spell this, still being worked on, yes.
Oh, yes, of course, draft with a capital D.
So can I ask about the um, workforce housing and the affordability even there, um. Mr. Shimp, how is that um, plan to be maintained?
The case of this project is sort of planned by design, just it's the the square footages are not. Uh, substantial, it's a smaller unit, uh, it's gonna be a, there's not. Swimming pools or other sort of luxury amenities, it's just designed as a workforce housing structure, basically, that's where the neighborhood is in. Um, it's, but there's not, there's no um, mechanism the city has to enforce that particular standard, be clear about that. But this structure is just not, it's not economical to build as a luxury project, you want to build it as something simple. And therefore simpler uh, project that ends up with smaller rents.
Okay, I hear that, but my concern there is also, I'm, you know, I live in a neighborhood that was workforce housing at some point. Um, mill workers at the X building and now you have houses that are selling. Um, mill workers at the X building and now you have houses that are selling for um three hundred um thousand dollars and up. And so the demands that the market will place um on any unit can increase that. So I'm asking with your company, how do you ensure that what it was built for, even though the market may um make it otherwise, y- your company otherwise able to increase rents above that workforce level? How do you all ensure that in an area like Shawlus?
That's a good question. The fundamental problem here is there are not enough apartments. And so every time one turns over, somebody can charge more for the rent, right? That's the issue. But it's really driven, in our opinion, the lack of supply of these kind of projects. If you look at how many have been built over time, there just simply aren't enough. And the mechanism, if there were, you know, a hundred more of these units like this, ten, ten unit buildings brought online, that would soften the uh price increases or stop them completely.
Maybe.
In this type of product, but it's, it's a function of, it's a function of getting enough housing on the ground to do that. There's no sort of um proffered mechanism for workforce housing. I mean, I think in a project like this, if there's a way to do it, we're not actually opposed to it, because that is what it is. We're not trying to make it other than that. I just don't know, like, uh, the thirty four twelve section of the city code talks about affordable housing. There isn't really a thing that covers this other than simply approving a project that fits into the kind of uh missing middle, small apartment design concept. It's inherently more affordable than the luxury stuff that you see, you know, otherwise.
Okay, so when you are saying missing middle, what does that mean for you?
That means something that's basically more than a duplex, but less than a garden apartment building, right? The, what you see often is the big two hundred unit apartment complexes that are, are HUD finances are, have swimming pools, clubhouse large units, et cetera. They fit into a certain uh government prescribed model, actually. So you see this, it's actually many HUD using their lending uh leverage to promote this sort of project, right? So that's the garden style, the twenty eight unit building, and then something that's probably ten units and below, ten to three. I think is what I think of as a missing middle project.
But the units won't necessarily um fill the gap for anyone if the um owners are not intentional about um rents. And if you're talking about families who are, like, what is, what d- does a missing um middle income family earn?
Well, I think so that the missing middle is more of the housing type than who's in it. I'll say, you know, in Almaro, we're developing some plans that are missing middle, let's call it a triplex that has, in fact, we actually have one we're gonna submit to the city in the next month. It has units that might be to rent for seven, eight hundred dollars a month, uh, the market rent for them in a missing middle structure. So there are, are ways, individual lots and designs to do that. Um, but this is really, this is like, this ha, this is for people who work in around that neighborhood. A bunch of hodgepodge businesses in there that people work at, and this is for folks who work in those. And I don't, I'm sure there are some higher paying jobs, there are some lesser paying jobs. And this has to fit in the market for those folks who want and need that sort of house.
All right, so just my thoughts about that. If we're talking about um structure, when we're talking about missing middle versus being intentional about middle income individuals being able to live in those spaces, um, when we know that we're in an area where um housing is rapidly being gentrified. Um, that is just something, you know, to think about. I think we keep spinning our wheels and finding ourselves back into these circles where there isn't a definition. Um, and if you leave um those definitions to be defined, as you can just see, it isn't really clear and you all are basing um some of the thoughts that you know, like counselor um Payne, if you, I, I think based on what I've heard you say before, you um are thinking of a certain person or family and an income that they are at being able to live in this um area. And in the S staff, chip, how, whatever that needs to look like, um Sam, for us to be able to ensure that the people that we're thinking of, because we're not thinking about what you built, um whether the refrigerator is um white, black or stainless steel, um which our cabinets um look like and how much they cost. That's not what we're talking about. We know that um people are moving in, rehabbing, um knocking down, rebuilding um in lots in um this community, lower income neighborhoods where people don't earn a lot of money. Uh, and so we need to be intentional when someone is saying that they are building for a person that we're just not talking about the um amenities, um what it's built out of. Um, whether someone of higher income would come in looking at a new place and ask for something different.
I, I would agree. And, and what I'll tell you would make like our life on our side much easier is if there was a policy set out about this sort of issue for an infill, you know, we want a workforce housing of a person not earning more than this. And that was the policy. If we knew that coming into these things or how much the affordable should be, if, if thirty four twelve is not that a factory, if there's um action by council to lay out clearly, here's the effective. And to your point, to target, you know, preserving affordability or availability for individuals in the community that need it, we would be required to follow that and we would design our way into things that made sense for that. We sort of work in this, as you say, it kind of flexes around in circles to sort of, we don't have a clear answer on what these things are and everyone has a whole different opinion of what they are and it makes it difficult. I don't, I don't disagree with you on any of the principles of that at all. It's just the, the execution of that has been very difficult over time. I really do believe that a, a policy from city council would sort of, would set that straight and you would get more what you expected if it was.
And we're working on that, which I'm assuming that you want to wait until the comp plan and um zoning um rewrite is complete, but I think um back to um the conversation when you, you made a comment when talking about um parking requirements, you talked about being like future and forward thinking. So, and you have laid out for us what some of the things that we could do better in. And I just think that a proffer could address those so that you could lead the way. Um, and how other developers could do that better.
Well, and I'll ju, I'll just say again, I mean, just based on the um, not only the building type, but the sort of rough estimates for what the rent will be, you know, I myself am a renter. I've had to look for housing. I can say these are on the lower end of the kind of rentals that are available in the market. Um, if you're not combining it with any kind of subsidy, and again, um, you know, my concern is without, you know, without this kind of project, um, you know, you're gonna have a market with rents that are twice this um or uh buy right, single family homes selling for six, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, so my decision is based really on, you know, what it seems like the monthly rental amounts are gonna be. And they're certainly not, you know, as lower to meet every need in the city, but it's one piece um on this vacant lot. And I think if we don't approve it, you know, we'll still see buy right development that is just gonna be even more expensive. Um, but said my thoughts.
Uh, I'd, I would just like to add that my earlier philosophical musings about what the city ought to be doing in terms of planning for Belmont, to the contrary notwithstanding, I agree very strongly with what Michael just said. I think we need more housing, more workforce housing, uh, and not everything. I mean, uh, that we have an affordable housing problem, not only in the eighty percent AMI and below categories, fifty percent and below, but just workforce housing and that's, the, the, this is a project that, you know, if, if we go to eight units instead of six, it changes the affordability. It doesn't merely change the profit, but it also changes the affordability. Uh, and that's an important piece too. So, anyway, I just want to throw that out there.
Just want to comment, Lloyd, I think eighty percent is probably uh workforce for a lot of people in
Probably is, you're right.
Areas, I just wanna clear that up.
Well, and this isn't, you know, it's obviously not a structured project with subsidy that sets out the structure in mind, but these rental levels are, you know, would be affordable at that AMI level.
Right.
If it's maintained, which wasn't answered clearly when I asked.
Well, the problem is that i- in a market economy, I don't know how you guarantee that kind of thing more than a few years down the road anyway. I, the only thing we can do is to recognize that that if you're building a different size, I mean, the real, the real test of affordability is the size. Uh, and if you are building relatively smaller apartments, they will be more nearly affordable than if you're building only two thousand square foot apartments.
All right, any other comments? All right, so um is there a motion for um item six, the approving the rezoning?
I would move to approve the rezoning application at twelve oh six Carlton Avenue.
I'll second the motion.
Any further comments? Ms. Robertson?
Yes, Mayor Walker?
No.
Vice Mayor Miguel?
Wait, we're not, we're, we're not supposed to be voting on the rezoning application. It says no vote.
Oh, you're right. Is there my
I do have a question about this because
Yeah, consent.
The SUP
Is a one reading.
Conversation, okay, because I, yeah, I'm fine with this going to the consent, but I'm not, I mean, I do feel like we need to talk about the SUP part.
Well, the way that um it's been said here and then the planning commission meeting is that this only works if both are approved. Um, and so I guess um
We went through this last time I remember, because I remember hearing it, because I listened to both conversations. So we have to move both of them to the next and we decide if we want to consent and maybe be discussed again, in which case I would want to discuss the SUP.
So the SUP is up for a vote tonight, um.
We can't, but we can't vote on the SUP for an R two.
Right, we have to do the rezoning first. Matt, can you help us?
Yes, such a, uh, you can talk about the SUP. If you wanted to deny the rezoning, you can vote to deny. If you're, if you wanted to do a straw poll to see how y'all feel about the rezoning, if it looks like you're going to approve the rezoning, then you maybe want to have a conversation about the SUP um so that you could see at your next reading, since that's one reading, if there's any conditions you wanted to change, add. Um, but that would be my suggestion is if you wanted to straw vote on the SUP, or excuse me, on the rezoning. Because if you're not gonna vote for the rezoning, you don't need to worry about the SUP, but if it looks like the rezoning would get approved, you would want to have a conversation then about the SUP. And hopefully, uh, legal will jump in if I gave you wrong advice.
No, Matt's correct, um, but if, if you want to add another wrinkle in, you also have the ability by a four fifths vote to waive the requirement for a second reading. So if you, if you wanted to vote on both tonight, um, you could uh make a motion to waive the second reading for the rezoning and then deal with, with them both. Um, but probably the, the more normal thing to do would, would be to proceed as Matt has described and possibly vote on both of them at your next meeting, um unless, unless there's a motion um, um, on the table to deny.
I say let's vote on both of them next meeting.
I second that. I, I agree with that. But I think we should still talk about this, what's possible in this SUP discussion or?
Think we have to wait, right?
Oh, until the next meeting.
No. Okay.
So I, I, I've got a, a question, just clarification for council. So if you advancing it, uh, is that the majority opinion of the city council to move the rezoning forward?
I think what we're saying is to move them both back to action items for the second meeting.
To answer your question, Mr. Kafuna, it sounds like there is a majority of counselors who would vote for the rezoning.
Okay, all right.
Where, okay, so maybe I'm not clear on that. How do you
They just wanted us, if we were gonna deny it, if we deny it tonight, it would just be done and we wouldn't even talk about this in two weeks. But it sounds like there's enough support for the rezoning, at least to say that we, we are not gonna kill everything right now. But it sounds like we can't take a formal vote on the rezoning until our next meeting, which means we can't take a vote on the SUP till our next meeting, because one leads to the other. But we can talk about them both.
Right.
Or you could do the four fifths vote and waive
I, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Okay.
No, I'm not either.
It's not an emergency situation anyway, so.
All right, so um comments, uh, so the approving the special use permit at um twelve oh six Carlton Avenue are, what's um?
So does, do we have a set more information from staff on this? Because it's a separate item. I've lost track. I know we asked questions about both.
It's probably not Yeah, there's probably not different information, but um your questions um or discussion may want to center around whether or not the um, any conditions listed in the special use permit um will adequately address whatever additional impacts going from five units to eight units might create within that neighborhood. So five, five units was the buy right and eight units would be the result of allowing the special use permit. So essentially, what the conditions in a special use permit are designed to do is is mitigate whatever the impacts might be from what you could do by right versus the additional um, um privileges uh that are granted by the special use permit.
And there's also a setback request. From thirteen to eight is what it was.
Thirteen feet to eight feet, yeah. Do we want to talk about that now or do we want to talk about that next meeting?
I'd like to make a very quick comment that might clear up some confusion about that setback issue.
Okay.
So the, and, and Matt alluded to it, there's a very strange three foot strip of R two zoning between us and the commercial property. And so the set, the special use permit setback is only to sort of pretend like that's not there. It's not, nothing's ever gonna get built on it. It's a three foot strip. The owner is who knows who, we don't know how it gets rezoned. But we're just trying to get closer to that parking lot to give us room for a, a safe entrance in the property on the other side. So we're, it's a matter of, it's a technicality, I think, if we weren't next to an R two strip, I don't know if there'd be any setback on that commercial side. But because we are, and it's a three foot strip, we don't really know who owns, thus the reduction is just to move over closer. But we're still effectively ten or eleven feet from the property line of the actual next developable piece, which is a giant parking lot. Just to clarify.
So the three foot strip is on the side towards twelve oh six, pardon me, twelve oh four? Have I got the direction correct? Yeah, uh, where, where that large parking lot is.
You're facing the property to the left.
Yeah, okay. And so the Yeah, okay. And so the, by insisting on a thirteen foot uh, setback there, we're basically protecting the parking lot from the encroachment of the building.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And nobody has any idea why that three foot strip is even there?
I think it's literally the spite strip. Somebody years ago kept that to impede some neighbor that didn't like. That's my best guess.
It says SS, Leonard Street SS. What did you call it?
A spite strip?
Spite strip.
Spite.
Spite.
Spite, okay. Cause it goes all the way from Leonard all the way over to Carlton, based on the GIS.
This is Kelsey with the Shimp Engineering. If I can just chime in for a second, it's a, it is a spite strip that was um, plotted with the original subdivision plot, um, when those lots were recorded back in the twenties or thirties.
I know that there are a lot of little strips like that around the city where we sit there and say, who owns that? Who's responsible for that? Turns out in many cases, the city actually owns it, but that's another story.
Are there any other questions?
So we'll just regroup on both of these next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So if um, these could be added back to action items.
Making deja vu.
All right. So it's um, eight thirty-three, so we'll take a break. Um, sorry for the, the delay for people who may have expected that to happen at eight. Um, and um, we'll um, reconvene at eight um, forty, eight forty. Um, thank you, um, Mr. Shimp, and thanks staff.
Thank you all.
All right. Call this meeting back to order. Um, next up, we have a resolution approving critical slopes waiver for the um, Charlesville redevelopment and housing authority, South First Street, um, phase one project, one reading.
Good evening. Carrie Rainey with Neighborhood Development Services. Um, the Charlesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, hence first referred to as CRHA, is requesting a waiver from the requirements and conditions of a critical slope waiver previously granted to it pursuant to section thirty-four, eleven twenty B for phase one of the South First Development. City Council granted a critical slope waiver with conditions to CRHA on March fourth, two thousand nineteen, previously for this project. The previously granted critical slope waiver allows constructing, construction and land disturbance activities within critical slopes for development that would include sixty-two multifamily residential units and three buildings in a community resource center. Improvements specific to areas where critical slopes would be impacted should the waiver be approved are shown on the critical slope waiver exhibit. Include portions of the buildings, sidewalks, on-street site parking areas, access aisles, stormwater maintenance facilities and recreational amenity spaces. Subsequent to the commencement of construction, CRHA contacted staff representing that it could not construct the development in accordance with the previously approved critical slope waiver. Specifically, CRHA believes that it cannot comply with condition four, which states, "The final plan shall include construction methods presented by the applicant to phase construction of the buildings, so that the first two buildings adjacent to First Street will be constructed first in order to create a better stabilized site during construction and to facilitate more effective." in order to create a better stabilized site during construction and to facilitate more effective erosion and sediment control measures." The Planning Commission discussed the waiver request modification at third July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. The Commission discussed potential modifications to condition four before voting six to zero to recommend the complete removal of condition four with all other conditions remaining. City Engineer Jack Dawson is in attendance and available to answer any technical questions. I'm happy to answer any questions as well. And the applicant team is also in attendance to answer questions and provide a presentation.
All right, thank you. You all want to continue and then just ask questions at the end. All right.
Would you like me to speak now, Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Ashley Davies with Riverbend Development and I actually don't have a prepared presentation for this evening. I think Carrie covered the background adequately in her report and basically, we had a great conversation at the Planning Commission about the issues we face when we put a bunch of technical conditions within the critical slopes waiver. And then we end up with a site like this where we need to collaborate very closely with Mr. Dawson and others to find solutions that A, match the site and B, match various difficulties with access to supplies. And you know, that, that situation seems to be constantly evolving and so the conclusion we came to in the Planning Commission meeting that it was best to leave off the specifics of condition four, knowing that A, we are closely collaborating with the city to make sure that we have the right solutions for this site and B, condition number one does give Mr. Dawson the authority to go above and beyond the standards of erosion and sediment control and suggest the solutions that he thinks are the right answer for this site. So that's where we landed and as you heard, we had a unanimous vote to make this change. Happy to answer questions.
So I think the, just for the future, I think it's important for us to do those presentations here so that people who may not have been able to watch the Planning Commission meeting or go back to review it would have the information. There was, I definitely need to see, Jack, there was a when you were doing your screen share, there was a picture of the site where you were pointing out the inlets and I need to see that to be able to ask some of my questions. So before seeing that, and maybe that won't help either, but I guess my first question would be, I, I did hear that point continuously about staff being able to ask question and with one of the agreement, even if we remove four, would be able to hold accountable, you know, have accountability. My, my thoughts there, my questions there were, it seemed like when we approved this the first time, just the building one and two waiting to build the third building to make sure that the erosion and sediment piece was in place. If we build all three buildings at once and something doesn't go right, I'm just wondering what, what does staff do in that moment? Is this where we end up with these stop work orders? If we already potentially foresee problems, which is why I guess four was in there in the first place to not construct all buildings at the same time. If we begin the construction process and I understand that it was, you know, talking about the materials being sixty to ninety days out. And there were a lot of comments centered around the client, CRHA, and meeting the expectation of the deadline, but the question that I had before and that I have now is just making sure that the standards that are supposed to be met are being met with, with this project. And that if we pass this now and staff is on site and there are complications or problems or something is not being met, I'm right, that what will ha, what will be the, what will, how will it be addressed?
Do you want me to go ahead and provide some feedback or would you like Jack to address that question, Mayor Walker?
I was asking for Jack to address it.
Sure. So we typically do inspections of all the sites that have land stirring permits and, and act permits to make sure that they're within the, the scope of what the plans dictate. And in this instance, alluded to, this is sort of above and beyond because it is of the critical slopes. And very generally to talk about this because it got very technical last time and I'll do my best to avoid that. Is the, the current approval that specifies buildings, building one, two first and completing those before starting building three is because building three is downhill of buildings one and two. Very close to their critical slopes and where the overall outfall from the project is. And the, the current sequence allows for the majority of the site to be completed and stabilized uphill of that. That you essentially have a much smaller project in building wise building. And having large swaths of open ground is what generates the, the sediment lane runoff, which is the threat to the environment. To your, to your second issue about sort of enforcement, what, what we do is we do the inspections and if we see something that looks like that's out of compliance, there's a whole sort of rubric or what we have to go through in order to issue notices of compliance and things like that. But ultimately, we shut down the project, which is not, you know, really that cudgel that, that is a, is a last resort because it's really a penalty because time is money in construction and that's obviously not in the interest of anyone to use that on the site. And so what we try and do is make sure that things stay with, stay within the confines. And while this is a little bit above and beyond in sequencing that, that is the intent. And so I have a meeting with the contractors and the consultants on Wednesday to talk about some of the remedial activities associated with them, expanding that the limits of disturbance already. And as, and as I thought, their, their plan development to address mitigating factors to edit, to change the sequence as discussed. And so we do the best we can to, to, to make sure that this is going to work. And I've, we've had conversations, both myself and my staff with the, the owner's rep and the, and the consultants and the contractors in the field about how we can mitigate this and what is required. And so, yeah, we'll do the best we can. I guess as of today, I heard that their intent was to actually build the first two buildings first, which would be great. So hopefully we can avoid the situation. I think Ms. Davies may be the only, I don't see any contractors on the list, but maybe she can speak to that, but that, that is the intent by, by, if, if this is what needs to be done, we'll do our best to come up with come with something alternate that will work. And to answer your overall point, stop recorders don't fix the environment. The whole point of this is to keep soil on site. Sedimentation, there's lots of pollutants in our sediment from legacy activities. We don't want the streams. You know, it, it has both impacts to the local area as well as downstream and all of the various environmental impacts. And our job is to prevent that. There is no, you know, fines, fines and stop recorders doesn't fix the, the damage, obviously. So, so we're in the midst of preventing that.
Yeah. No, and that's kind of what I was, what I was thinking, but I just wanted to make sure that that has come up quite a bit in conversations surrounding projects, just stop work orders. And I think we all want to get it right so that we don't end up in that space. It would be helpful for me to know if, so do we need to waive section four if the intention is to build the first two buildings first?
Mayor Walker, I think that's a great question and that information just came forward today and the reason why I wanted to continue on with this update to the waiver is for a couple of reasons. I'm just concerned with the the environment of all this material flow has been very tenuous and I feel like it, it changes on a daily basis. So I think the benefit to me is that if, if section four is removed, we still have all the same protections and the same collaboration with Mr. Dawson and his team to make sure we have the right solution on site, but so I think it just gives us the flexibility. If you all determine tonight that you don't think that's the right way to go, it sounds like we have some thoughts on how to, how to get back to proceeding with one and two first, but even if we, you know, weren't, e- even if we were going to move forward with all three buildings, we would still be doing stabilization, stabilization of the upper areas of the site. So I think I'm just trying to make sure that it concerns me when the, the critical slopes document gets overly technical in a way that doesn't allow us to continue having flexibility with staff to collaborate on site, which I think is, you know, the more appropriate place for those technical decisions is with the technical staff members and contractors, et cetera.
So is that a, there was conversations about us addressing this, you know, in the future so that this wouldn't be, is that something that we can do as we have these conversations about what our code says, what versus changing it for this project? If it's not going to impact anything negatively?
I don't think I understand your question. I'm sorry.
No, instead of changing, removing section four, if you're saying this is something that, I know we voted on it before and the Planning Commission discussion, there was discussion around how this is easier to handle if you're on site with staff through problems and that there was, that you all didn't think this was something, I guess, that should be in place to begin with and what you're asking for now, I guess, flexibility. Something that we can consider in the future in terms of when we're talking about the, because part of Lisa's point during the Planning Commission meeting was that by the time we are putting something like this in place, we don't have enough information yet to know actually needs to be in place. And that's something that staff actually does on site. And as things come up with the review process. So what I'm asking is that instead of us changing this particular document that was, that's already been voted on, is that just something that we can consider in the future as we talk about the sediment and erosion part of these plans? Or is that something that needs to change today because it would negatively impact something?
Well, I am asking that you consider it tonight, that the group consider it tonight to remove section four. It doesn't mean, you know, section four, as it's written, may still be, end up being a part of the E and S plan because Mr. Dawson still has the authority through section one of the critical slopes waiver to require us, that of us if he decides that that is the best solution. But as we collaborate this week and moving, moving forward, we may determine that there is another better solution through those technical conversations. And when you, and when you put this type of information in a city council document, it means that we have to return to city council every time new information is available versus just being able to be more nimble and make adjustments with staff as necessary.
I have a question for Mr. Dawson. Jack, I, do you feel that you can, I mean, that this, this amendment works in being able as the city's engineer to guarantee the best of your ability, obviously, and your staff's ability that what we need out of this critical slope will be there?
I guess to that question and maybe to answer some of the mayor's question, we, this particular project, we actually did look at, at, at a little bit more of an advanced design phase than, than typical projects because it was on expedited review cycle and we had several iterations of comments and things. So we, this item four was crafted for this particular project. It's not like a general, it's not something in the toolbox. Oh, you build buildings one and two, you know, this is specifically tailored to that. And that is a, that is a very good mechanism to, to make this work. But so that would work. What we have now, we, we, the, the replacement condition is to rely on condition one, which is a very general catch-all that says at the discretion of the city engineer, whatever it says, to ensure sediment's kept on site. We have not seen a proposition for that. I've only had discussion with the contractors. So I, it'd be hard for me to tell you that this mitigating factor or, or whatever's, it's almost certain that condition four is the best way to protect, to keep our sediment, uh, control on, on site and, and well managed. But the rest is petting. So I'd have to sort of defer at this point in time on the judgment of, of what's better. Or, or if, or if we can guarantee erosion sediment control on site, it's never a guarantee. The, the original plan was, was, was the best plan. And hopefully we can get something that's close to that, but it would be, it certainly would be best to, to see how things shake out and maintain the existing plan. But the, the timing and sequencing of that is outside of my control and, and understanding.
And how would you represent? How would you like, I guess, describe the biggest risk here to not following the plan that was already voted on versus what's being proposed today? What are, what are the biggest risks that we're talking about?
The easiest way is to describe how the sediment trap would work, which is essentially a pond. And if you go out there now, there are what we call dikes, which are, I think eighteen inches tall and three foot wide soil berms that direct all the sites runoff into the, to the basin and, or the sediment trap. And what the trap does is as a sediment lane water comes into it, it settles the sediment out. There's dry portion and a wet portion. So on the bottom is the wet portion where there's constantly water other than evaporation. It fills up and slowly fills through the gravel. That is the, the proven best way to handle sedimentation because, primarily because you have large physical barriers, which are the dikes that keep runoff from moving through there. It is not, it's, the, the alternatives are to use things like silt fence. When you use silt fence and then you have trades and the, the rectors, the building erectors come in who don't know the first thing about silt fence and wonder why this stupid piece of fabric's getting in their way from Who don't know the first thing about silt fence and wonder why this stupid piece of fabric's getting in their way from between their masons and their plumbers and whatever else is going on. Then it becomes an enforcement issue, making sure that those things are in place. So it's much easier to make sure um that the 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 trap is a much more effective way of controlling large areas of disturbance at a given time. So the the threat by removing that, um you have three buildings under construction. You have your um your lifts and your various trades around all of those three buildings, creating this large area of disturbance. And so you're relying on things like silt fence and in the protection. And using the exist, the the what at this point in the sequence would have been the constructed future storm art system. To take the brunt of the sediment load when you get a rain event. So it becomes an issue of policing your own site. And then if that doesn't work and uh effective control over the site and what's happening on the site on the contractor's side. It becomes um inspection enforcement. Um and you know, we we only have so much staff obviously to dedicate. Uh we we patrol the whole city, so it's not like we can have somebody there constantly watching them saying, no, this is what you have to do um differently. And so there's there's other ways you can design to make sure this is better. And we've had conversations about how that can be done, but I have not seen a a formal proposal on that yet. Um but the the threat is that you get a large rain event and you get large discharges of of mud from the site to the slopes, which further rode the slopes. And then you have sort of the the environmental impacts of that.
And how does that, what is the risk for our water systems, like there's a nearby branch, um Pollock's branch?
Yeah, so I wanna say that Pollock's branch is impaired for something, I can't quote me on this, cause I don't I don't memorize these things. But I can tell you that both Pollock's branch and then ultimately Morse Creek are are not in the in the greatest shape. And and the the primary, you know, you can talk all all about restoration of these systems. But um you can't restore a system if the drainage basin that contributes that system is already screwed up. Or there's been so much sedimentation load uh that moved through it, either deposited it or moved through it downstream. Um and so very generally, the threats of erosion are the pollutant of the sediment itself, which settles on various aquatic plants. If it gets all the way down to bay, you get into things like submerged aquatic vegetation and and um, you know, there's the sunlight penetration into the water and everything else. But the sediment both impacts the macroinvertebrates and um plants that are in the stream from here down to the bay. As well as carrying the physical pollutants that are in lots of our sediment that exist in urban area in into the system. But through uh the soluble process and in the in the physical material themselves.
Are there any other questions?
Is it the the question that I've got is, why did council think it was necessary to put this condition in in the first place? As opposed to simply saying, okay, Mr. Dawson, you're the boss?
I mean, I I obviously I can't speak to council, but generally the process is that we make recommendations. Um and we do the best we can with the material, with the materials presented at the time, again, getting to the sequencing of how advanced the plans are. Um and so having seen those plans and having it engineered such that the building three was in on top of that sediment trap. It made sense to us and it makes it made general sense with how developments typically are built, where you're not always doing all three buildings at once. They it it worked with their phasing at the time, that that made the most sense. Um I I have other jobs other than to be the boss of this project. And we have staffing issues as is, our our erosion sand patrol inspectors retired last month. So we have one, two, depending on how you classify them, dual inspectors for all capital improvements. And erosion sand patrol for all forty some land disturbing activities in the city. And um all private development within the right way to inspect. So among the other things that our division does, so that's the reason why we can't default to um. That 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 tact, I I suppose. Um that being said, um understanding the complications that COVID has created with the construction supply chain. We will certainly do our best to make sure that um if this is waived, there's something. Um that both makes sense and is practically enforceable and doable, which um a lot of times there is a breakdown between what goes on a plan. And what a contractor can or is willing to do. Um and since we're so well into this process, we have a lot of involvement from all stakeholders, hopefully we can do a a good job of making sure. Um whatever mitigating factors are are designed, we can inspect and and can be carried out.
I mean, I've I've been involved in enough construction litigation to know that it happens with some regularity. That a contractor faced with a problem, looks at the project, looks at the plans, looks at what he can do. And then says, okay, here's how I'm gonna solve the problem with that. But that if there's nothing in the project documents that prohibits a certain kind of activity, they're directing in a particular direction. He's free to do whatever whatever he wants to do, whether that ultimately is a good idea or not. So there may be a benefit at some point to being very specific about that. The question in my mind is really one of of expertise or competence. Uh and whether it makes any sense for council to be the the entity that says. This is what's important, uh or whether there is some other way to to. Give the authority to in this respect.
And if I could.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if I can chime in there, um just like um the conversation that we had just. We just had with um Mr. Shumpf, if something um were to change in a project. That we voted on as a condition of the project, then it could come back before us. Um but uh most of those recommendations, we are asking staff for their expertise when we're putting it in. So uh for me, I wouldn't have had the knowledge to put in number four. I would have had to hear what um staff recommendations were. And to hear from the um developers about, you know, their thoughts around it. And then make a decision from there. I guess some background, also with um the, you know, project. We were. I don't know, you all have background, I'm tired now. But um that's the only point I wanted to clear up. I wouldn't have been able to say, hey, um and it was this council, right? Yes, was it this council? No, it was a previous. Yeah, Heather and I were here um that um, you know, we were just basing it on the recommendations. From um from staff and what they thought could make the project um work and meet the requirements. That the locality is supposed to meet based on the state uh state requirements.
I'm I'm perfectly happy for council to be the heavy if it's useful. But if it turns out to be burdensome, I would rather get us out of the picture.
But this, this is sort of, this is a policy choice that several councils ago made. When they enacted the critical slopes ordinance, which contemplates that, you know. Uh you know, vegetated slopes are to be protected because they have environmental benefits. And if somebody needs to disturb them, you know, there are conditions. And council chose to say, you know, that you would need a waiver from council. As opposed to, you know, referring this with some guidelines and standards for administrative decision making. But since that time, the state has has updated and and um revised. Their erosion and sediment control regulations generally. The city has a much more robust erosion, locally administered um erosion and sediment control program. And one thing you might consider in the future, rather than having a critical slopes ordinance that you have to become involved in. Is changing, um the state allows a locality to adopt some more stringent regulations. Than what the state may have, as long as it can set out a justification. So if if you at the local level wanted to develop some um stringent standards for sites such as this. Which have to intrude to an extent on on critical slope areas. You could come up with an administrative standard that could be applied in the E N S process. And you could get yourselves out of that decision making. Um it just would require some work um using a different ordinance. But until then, we've got these provisions in the zoning ordinance. And they require council to determine whether there's anything above and beyond. What what the developer is already required to do by law, whether it's under state regulations or your local ordinance. That will make up for the fact that they're going to disturb these vegetated areas. And what where we've gotten is in this this loop where, you know, council's looking for some. Um some expertise from staff on the front end, but staff doesn't have the information it needs. Because in most of these cases on the front end, you don't have your um development plans finalized. To the point where you're ready to have a final erosion sediment control plan. So it's 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 been a very difficult process to get through. And it's difficult for council to understand and apply. And it's very difficult for staff to make recommendations without enough information on the front end. So we're sorry about that, but that's, let's add this to the list of zoning ordinance provisions. That that we think about um when we when we eventually get there.
Well, I would just like to see us being helpful to staff in administering the program. Uh and if they want flexibility, we should give them flexibility. And if they want us to be the heavy, we should be the heavy, or if we're required to be the heavy, we should be the heavy. But um to to me, um you know, I've I've got confidence in Mr. Dawson. But if he wants us to, you know, to to have that requirement there so that everybody knows it, hey, I'm I'm okay with that too.
Any other comments, questions?
No, again, I mean, just reiterate, as been said, I just, these are such technical considerations that we we heavily will rely on our staff. And I just don't want us to find ourselves, um you know, in in a situation where we haven't crossed our titties and dotted our i's. But it sounds like his staff is fine, it is amenable to us moving forward and voting on this. Um as the planning commission did, but the preference would be that we keep that restriction in place.
So is there um two things? One comment that was um and the question that I have, just to make sure about the precedent that this sets. If we remove it, I am thinking about, there are other projects that there are some critical slopes that um request. And I, and just what does that mean? Does it mean anything? Is it just specific to this project? Or could this, could developers come back in the future if you all put in a um? Condition such as this, or we vote on it and um asks for us to waive it? You're muted.
Um I don't think there's a specific precedent in that, this is um a specific project with specific conditions. Yeah, to to the, yeah, the the general precedent certainly, but um it's not a. Again, this this condition R four is not like pluck from us, it's tailored to this project for this instance.
Okay, um alright, so we can um, this is a one reading. And based on Ashley's comments, our other option could also be to defer. And if the issues that they um thought would impact the project negatively. Come up, then it can come back to council and don't have to go before the planning commission.
I like that option. I prefer that too.
Ms. Davies, what is, what are your thoughts there?
Um I think that's that's fine, we're gonna have the meeting this week. And it sounds like at this moment, we have the flexibility we need. Like I said, I just am concerned because I just learned that information today. And with these projects, it seems to change on a weekly basis. And so I am certainly not trying to circumvent city council. Or Mr. Dawson's expertise. I just thought um it would be um most helpful to the project. To continue um by eliminating section number four tonight. But at this moment, I think we are able to meet it. So um I think it it's fine if if we need to to wait a while and keep considering it. It just um it it did spring up, you know, a month or six weeks ago as a major issue. Um that was blocking the forward momentum of the project. And as you all know, it's just, it's pretty wild times in the construction industry. So my thought was if section four is removed. And and when I say removed, I think we would still at this moment intend to honor it. And and work with Mr. Dawson as that is the best solution. But all it does, as um Ms. Robertson said, it kicks it back. Well, first back to um your your coverage by um item number one. And then back to all the state regulations and requirements, which are um very extensive. And we have to, we have to meet those, it's not like we can just um go rogue and do whatever we want. So we have a very um extensive erosion and sediment control plan. And that is the place where these items are typically handled. So I, you know, I'll kind of leave it back to you on how everyone feels most comfortable proceeding. But I I mainly just wanted you all to know why I still had this before you tonight. And it's mainly, everyone has the goal of keeping this project moving forward. Because we have people depending on these homes. So by having additional flexibility to work with staff as these hiccups come up. It just helps us versus having to come back to city council.
Alright, thank you, and I understand that. And I hope that um I would speak for myself, I hope that I can speak for everyone in this, the city is investing a lot of money in um this project. So it's in our, all of our interest for it to be successful. Um and so um and to prevent delays and keeps costs low. Um and I think I know at at least when um, you know, staff was talking. Um about making sure it got to planning commission in time enough to make sure that it got in time. So um I'll check with um councillor um Payne and Snup to see what what their thoughts are about um deferring. And if an emergency comes up, then it could come back quickly. And I'm sure that even if we had a, needed to have, you know, a special meeting or something, that like things could be arranged. But I'll let them share their thoughts and then we'll see.
I'm okay with deferring.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is it just seems like the path to least resistance and the most flexibility to just remove it. But if that's the will of others, I'm open to deferrals, especially since it sounds like it's not like an immediate threat to the timeline or the ability of the project to move forward.
Okay, and I think I'm there, I'm with the deferral too, if it's not gonna negatively impact um at this time. And especially with um, you know, all the concerns. And I uh have, you know, been, you know, clear about making sure that other um. You know, that developers working on other projects are, you know, following guidelines that we um have voted on. If they make sense, um and so I would want to do the same, you know, um for this project too. So if it's not gonna negatively impact anything, I think we would be having a different discussion if you still felt the way you all.
Okay, I think that makes sense and we will carry on and and all hope for the best. Thank you very much for your support and consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Also, at this point, if something if something does come up about this, that delays the project, we we will be able to hear it much faster now. You've already gone through the first set of hoops.
Okay. And I think the relationship that we have with the, I mean, there are several avenues from the redevelopment committee meetings to the PMT meetings that and I know some of the concerns that came up last week, the that I received emails pretty quickly from Mr. Ikafuna and Mr. Sanders. So people are paying attention and the right people are paying attention. And so hopefully, the concerns that have been there previously will be addressed more quickly and everybody will become more com- comfortable with the process. All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty million dollars, providing for the form details and payment of such bonds and for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city. And it's one reading.
Good evening, council. Our, we have spoken with you before and our city's financial advisor, PFM, regularly monitors the city's debt portfolio for refunding options or opportunities. The resolution that is before you is consistent with previous refunding resolutions with one exception, which is that this resolution identifies all the potential near term candidates versus just a specific bond issue. And it's requesting that it that you provide staff with the authorization to move forward if certain parameters are achieved. The reason we're proposing this resolution is to provide the the flexibility to react to react quickly, to lock in debt service savings to the extent that the refunding meets the parameters outlined in the resolution. Basically, when we do a refunding, we try to ensure that we are achieving at least a three percent total debt service savings. Again, note that the parameters approach that we're presenting in this resolution is consistent with what we've done before. Any of the refunding or refinancing savings will roll into the debt service fund and can be used to help pay future capital projects. So again, this is not a request to issue additional debt, but rather to refinance existing debt. And this would be up to a maximum amount. So we've listed in the resolution the specific series that would be applicable to this. Market conditions continue to be at historic lows, but is also very volatile. So there's decent movement in the market from day to day and even week to week. Most notably, right now, we're looking at the series twenty eleven, which does have a callable provision. And if we are able to get this done, that one bond issue alone, the refunding could save us in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. So we are working on that one and we'll be coming back to you with the results if we're able to get that one done. And then again, there is the potential for tax law changes. There are discussions that are continuing in Congress, which could help with some of the other advanced refundings of some of the bond other bond issues that are listed in this resolution. So that is what we're here to ask of you tonight.
Great, thank you. So I could you explain a little bit more? Because was it nine hundred thousand or so last time, too?
I believe it was. So last time we refunded the series twenty ten bonds, they also were callable, which means that when we issue the bonds, they're structured in such a way and typically it's about halfway through. So after about ten years, there is a callable provision whereby the city can call those bonds in and and pay them off, pay the investors off with without having to hold the money in an escrow. And so the same is true now with the series twenty eleven bonds. And again, given the interest rates that were on those bonds, which because they were only a year apart, was very similar. So the savings is very similar at the nine hundred thousand. Again, it'll depend on the market, so we'll definitely come back to you with a final. But right now, if if things hold, we're looking at roughly a little over nine hundred thousand. So approximately about a hundred thousand dollars a year in debt service savings on that one bond issue.
What is the interest rate on that one?
Um, it's a variable rate. Great question. I I I'll send that to you in an email. I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Just ballpark, any idea?
It's probably, the coupons on those are probably somewhere between three and five percent.
And we're currently getting one point something?
Less than one and a quarter. So almost virtually free money to to the large extent.
And so this year doing budget will, where will we? Once everything is finalized, I'm assuming you'll update us on the vote from a couple of months ago. How does this? How is this reflected in the sheet that you show us annually?
Yeah, so the actual annual debt service payments will be less. And so on that big ugly table that we've talked about a lot of times, that that could show up in one of two different ways. One would be the actual transfer that would be required from the general fund or the debt service fund balance that we've been using to sort of buy down some debt. So it will, you know, it the more we can refund now a higher cost debt at a lower cost is more we can use to spend on future capital projects.
Okay.
And nine hundred thousand dollars a year, I guess about one hundred thousand dollars a year, is that right?
Correct. And that's net of fees and everything that it would cost to to refund that. So that would that is truly in our pocket savings.
I was going to ask if there was hidden, there is fees, kind of like when you refi- finance your house with closing costs and stuff, is there something like that with the reissuance?
There are, but because we just did a bond issue so recently, they those costs are significantly reduced in terms of the timing. And it depends on how you do it. If we are able to do a private bank placement versus a competitive sale, then those costs are are different as well. But we always try to look for the lowest cost option. And if, again, if the refunding does not accomplish at least a three percent debt service savings, we don't consider it viable option.
And how how long does it take to complete the process?
Um, in terms of the refunding? So if we do a private placement, we can probably get that done within the next thirty days. If we do a competitive sale, we can probably have that done and closed within forty five to sixty days.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
And only one other point. We probably will look to bring before council a similar resolution like this every year or include it with the annual appropriation, just so we are in alignment to be able to take advantage of refunding savings as they come.
Sounds good, thanks for looking out.
Absolutely.
So will the update, so you're saying just to have something kind of voted on so that you won't have to bring that them before us?
So what we're asking is basically just for you to authorize staff, i.e. the city manager, with the ability to take advantage of any refunding savings without having to bring an individual resolution back to council every time for every series. New debt, we absolutely would be coming to council for those. But just for refunding is what we're asking for.
But like next year's around this time, we'd be expecting to see one for the ten years earlier?
Yeah, and a lot of times we have traditionally rolled these refundings up with our new bond. At the time, we'd sell our new bond. So sometimes we just do, like this last bond resolution that we did, it was a a general obligation and refunding bond resolution. So most of the time, we sort of look at this and we we lump it all in one sale. Given the volatility of the market and also a lot of the recent tax law changes, it's to our benefit to continue to look at that and be able to take the advantage of that as it as it comes along, as opposed to sort of doing that once a year.
So when will we receive an update if we if it's passed in that way?
So if you all pass the resolution tonight, we will move forward with evaluating a potential RFP for private bank placements or whether or not to move forward with a competitive sale. And once either one of those are complete, we'll definitely report back to you on the results of that.
Yeah, my question was, starting next year, if we do, if we vote to just allow s- city manager to, will we get an update at some point before budget? Or is it doing budget? Will we get it once you all are, you know, when you all are determined whether it's going to be pu- public or competitive sale? Like at what point will?
We we would update you with each one. In fact, there would be, you know, that whole signature process that we go through. All of that would happen with each refunding. So we would definitely keep you apprised and either, you know, Mr. Boiles through his weekly meetings with you would keep you in the loop on that as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I know we adopt the resolution providing for issuance and sale of such of general obligation refunding bonds of the city of Charlottesville, Virginia in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty million dollars, providing for the form details and payment of such bonds and providing for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city.
Second.
All right, Ms. Robertson.
Yes, Mayor Walker.
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that carries five oh.
Thank you.
You all, and thank you for, you know, working on that. That we need all the help we can get.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have a report under general business to update the reconstitution of services for city government operations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will get us started. And we also have those who have been working on this for for quite a while. Emily Pletia is fresh off of vacation and glad to see her on here. I think she rushed to get here, as well as Brian Wheeler and and Kena Thomas as well. Things have changed a lot even since we put this packet together. Staff intended to come before you tonight to present the future recommendations to consider a termination of the continuity of government effective September seventh of twenty twenty one. Just as a presentation, not asking for a vote tonight. The continuity of governments, this ordinance allows a local government to take action and put in place certain restrictions necessary to assure the continuity of government during a disaster or state of emergency. Given recent Blue Ridge Health Department COVID case numbers, which are steadily increasing with a regional ninety percent Delta variant presence and with national COVID positivity rates reaching highs, the highest since December and January, staff is delaying this recommendation and will present to you at your August work session a recommendation that will likely request the continuity of government ordinance to stay in effect through its termination date of October nineteenth of twenty twenty one. Prior to that date, staff will update you to either terminate earlier or to extend the ordinance for additional months. Currently, indoor city activities are restricted with recommendations for outdoor activity safety. At this time, we expect to continue current restrictions with only minor changes that may include some changes to our special events applications. With this delay, council can consult with staff to review these revised operating procedures for how public meetings are conducted and which meetings will be able to be held both virtually and in person. The city COVID management team will begin meeting on a more frequent basis now that COVID cases are rising again and to monitor local COVID conditions and to consult with the health district. The bat, I'm sorry, the Blue Ridge Health District Director, Dr. Denise Bonds, will be at your next council meeting to provide a very timely update of concerns and recommendations for our area. As we progress, the city COVID team will be making recommendations to keep both citizens and employees as safe as possible and will be updating you regularly. Emily, Brian, Kena, we'll ask you if you have any specifics that you would like to share or perhaps we can just answer questions.
I have no specifics. I would just add that the the numbers, the positive cases that are trending upwards are in the in the area of what we were seeing in the fall, around October, November, as well as in the March, April range with an average of twenty seven new cases. I'm sorry, fif- sixteen new cases on a seven day average. There were twenty seven yesterday. So we're seeing a lot more. And as Mr. Boyle said, much of that is the Delta variant, which we know to be pretty virulent. The update on the numbers of the fully vaccinated for the region is fifty six point three. I think the memo at the time of Brian's draft of this was fifty three, fifty six percent fully vaccinated in the region with sixty eight percent in the county and fifty nine point eight, roughly sixty percent in the city. That's the only thing I would add.
So are the twenty seven new cases in in the Blue Ridge Health District, all six jurisdictions?
That's correct. It was about seventeen in the or sixteen in the city yesterday. But in the the moving average, the seven day average is around sixteen.
So sixteen of the twenty seven new cases were in Charlottesville?
That's correct.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. It's it's significant. It's 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 and and their kids, their positive kid cases, which we weren't seeing as much of previously. And that's, I think, what what has people, you know, really taking note. Hopefully, it's convincing them to get vaccinated, too.
I think another thing we want to do tonight is besides updating you on the the current numbers, but, you know, let you know that over the next month, we're going to keep collecting that data and seeing how our region is responding. Right now, for city employees, we think about, we can document seventy percent of employees are vaccinated. So we feel like we have more work to do on that front. So as an employer, we're going to really be pushing additional vaccination opportunities. You'll start seeing some of that communications come out about having the health district's mobile unit available, you know, each of the next six Mondays down on the downtown mall. So we're going to be driving not only the public, but also our staff who have not gotten vaccinated yet to get vaccinated. So we're going to take advantage of this opportunity that we've got where City Hall has not yet reopened fully for things like in person meetings. And then the other part of this memo was to sort of tee up an approach, a trial balloon, if you will, for how we might do in person meetings once we're ready to do those. And the hybrid format is something we think has been very positive as far as a way, or I should say, the virtual meetings have been very positive as a way to engage more of our community and also facilitate staff participation from home. And and tonight, what's in front of you is a proposal for how we could support a hybrid approach where the decision-makers would have to be in person, of course, but the public and some staff could participate remotely for some of those meetings that we have. One thing I just want to point out, because you probably haven't thought about this too much. Right now, the way we do virtual meetings, it it works really well because everyone has a camera and a microphone. Once you put all of you into a room, then the microphones and cameras become more labor-intensive for us to make work really well for a broadcast. So it's the reason we're limiting the number of boards that we would recommend get this hybrid treatment is because of staffing issues and also the number of rooms where we have where that can work really well. We've set up city space with CARES money such that it's now a three-camera broadcast-ready facility, much like council chambers, and we're ready to put that to use for your meetings and other meetings like the PCRB and the Human Rights Commission.
This this was really a recommendation for how we could move forward when we think it's appropriate to do so. But right now, it's we're still recommending to remain conservative with our posture. This, you know, I I didn't mention a significant, about a third of the cases that we're seeing are are breakthrough cases, which are the cases where people are vaccinated and they're still testing positive. Now, those people likely aren't going to get as sick as the the others, but but that's that's a significant percentage to be still contracting the virus. So at this point, this is, you know, we're in a holding pattern, but this is the proposal or this is the, you know, information for you all to consider once we we do feel like it's time to to make that next step.
We do have some boards and commissions who were anticipating being able to start back in person in September. So we're just asking that you stay alert and just be prepared to still continue those meetings virtually if necessary.
And recognizing that we are in a holding pattern, I just looking at the details that are, you know, with the supporting documentation for this memo, I just want to thank you guys for just all the thoughtfulness around just the roles and responsibilities in these different, more complex formats. I think that whenever we are able to take that major step forward, that we're going to be able to be really well-prepared to do it. And I couldn't agree more with the desire to continue with it. Some kind of hybrid for these major boards and commissions, including council, because I I think that it just provides an added benefit to the public. So just want to thank you for the heavy lift to pull all those details together for us to consider. And again, we'll we'll be in a holding pattern until we can really look at that more seriously. So, thank you.
Yeah, Brian and his team deserve all that credit. And also, it should be noted that they're still continuing to support Blue Ridge with all of the communication efforts that they're doing, including the town hall that Dr. Bonds and her team will be doing on this Thursday, which should be enlightening.
I I it's good to hear, Emily, you say the breakthrough, because I don't think people really understand how many people, because they are not hearing that, it'll say something like virtually all, you know, all cases are unvaccinated. And then somewhere will pop up and people will hear about these breakthrough cases that nobody is talking about, thinking that if you tell people that some people who are vaccinated are getting sick, that they won't get vaccinated. And what I'm hearing from people is that they are not trusting the process because they are not hearing the whole story. And, you know, so I just think it's important for us to consider that. This, yeah, thank you all for this, too. I know this is one thing where, topic where Chip is daily, sometimes multiple times a day. I'm like, look at this. This is what's happening. Because I think it's so important to take care of people. And it's, you know, a very, it's it's very difficult to do. And the culture that we are, we built, people want things instantly and they don't want to be hindered in in any way. And it's just preventing us from actually getting where we actually, you know, want to be. I am so concerned, especially looking, I mean, I know so many people personally who are not doing well right now that are tied to maybe three events, local events and younger people, people who thought, you know, I'm going to be fine and they don't, you know, they're not so, you know, not doing very well. Lots of cases in our area and especially, you know, the people that I'm hearing from the most cases that when black men are contracting COVID, they are not faring too well. You know, they're getting really sick. And so trying to figure out what the what that conversation needs to look like and how to get people, you know, to trust, you know, a process. I keep writing on Facebook, at least find someone that you, a medical professional that you trust that can address your concerns. And it's so, you know, it's just so important to wear your mask, limit engagement, like all those things, and then find someone you can trust. So it's it's really, it it's really a hard space. And I think that it's going to be a really challenging winter, even more so than last year. And I'm very concerned about that. The only other comment I have is that I know that we're doing this, like for meetings, our meetings, other boards and commissions. But it's important for us, I think, even though people are not going to be happy about it, to set a standard, you know, for the community and to be as aggressive as possible. And I know everyone knows that I'm that way anyway, and I take a lot of heat from it. But by the time some of state and federal leaders get around to making some decisions, I think they're ultimately going to have to make anyway, look how many lives that we're losing. We we may lose in that process or even if they live, the long-term effects of COVID that people are experiencing even before, you know, the Delta, the Delta variant. So I hope that we can be very considerate. I know I wrote a post maybe two weeks ago and Daniel Kaufman came on and was like, so what is city council planning on doing? And I said, I don't know. We haven't made a decision. I know what I would do, but this is where we are. You know, we haven't made a decision yet. And I know they are looking, you know, to want to do some of those same things, but that, you know, to continue course, to plan for, word about businesses, taking care of the family. And all of those things are very valid. But as I said last year, I just think if we are not well, if we're not alive, then how much do those things matter? So thanks for this. And I just hope that when some of the concern, you know, comments that we've got the past month, Chip, for you, you know, about special, special events and, you know, I just hope that we can be consistent in telling people that we are prioritizing safety, even if some of our citizens are going to be upset with us.
And I hope that people will get vaccinated.
Can I, can I inject? Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, because a year ago, we were waiting for a vaccine and that vaccine is here. And right now, every child under the age of twelve doesn't have the option. And I have three of them in my house. And so the more people that recognize that responsibility, I think, the better.
I just wanted to correct the numbers that I said. My math was off. It wasn't, I I apologize. As Mr. Boyle's referenced, I was just traveling, but it's twenty percent of the cases. Twenty percent of the cases from last week were breakthrough cases.
And I've been having this discussion about vaccination with people on Facebook and quite a bit in some phone calls. And I would encourage everybody to read this book because when you're talking about why people may be concerned, the pointing fingers is just not helpful. And we need to make sure that we are addressing the concerns people have adequately, because that is ultimately getting them someone that they can trust, who is patient with them to answer those questions, for them to know whether it's through that's, you know, whether the questions they have about vaccinations, that someone is going to take the time and not just assume. You know, even if we look at our own health district, we have, when Myra did her FOIA, people were not even being offered the vaccine, you know, at that time. By the time some of the restrictions had been removed, they still did not have the mechanisms in place to vaccinate everybody. People are talking about the Delta variant spreading. And and we're talking about now, our community in Charlottesville, Virginia, we're talking about a variant of the virus that started in India. India did about three things that they should have changed, including that, even though they're the largest vaccine manufacturer, they did not make enough vaccine for their population. They did a policy of giving about twenty-five percent of it away. And at one time prematurely, just like we did with removing mass restrictions, they halted vaccine production. That then variant then made it to the UK and then it is making it here. So the, especially in this community, and this is what I keep telling people, the people that we are talking about who have vaccine hesitancy, they did not travel to the UK or to India. And so part of the taking ownership that our government prematurely made some decisions that landed us in this place needs to be the first part of the conversation. And that's the vaccination, people getting vaccinated or continuing to be very deliberate in their ability to remain safe, to keep other people safe, is twofold. And those things did not happen. So I'm hearing a lot of people blaming people instead of trying to figure out what is preventing them from being vaccinated and then getting the people they trust in front of them to answer those questions so they are considerate.
And I would just only add the cautious, positive news, which is very cautious, because you don't want it to be a reason not to remain cautious and vigilant, but just nationally, I think ninety, over ninety-nine percent of hospitals are deaths are among the unvaccinated. I think ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent of hospitalizations are among the unvaccinated. So and unlike in previous ways, we're not seeing the kind of increases of deaths we've seen. So I think it's just proof that the vaccines do work. And as others said, you know, anything we can do to try to get that number up and recognizing, you know, it's certainly shame is not going to work to achieve that. And there's lots of, you know, complex reasons for it. But just want to highlight, you know, I think, you know, we're seeing, you know, clear evidence of the power of the vaccines and that they do work.
Are there any other comments from counselors?
Thank you all very much for the work you put into this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all, and we will be keeping you updated always.
All right. Yeah, thank you all. Really appreciate it. And, yeah, I hope we all figure it out. We have other business and questions for city manager follow-up. So counselors, I guess, are there any questions that you have for Mr. Boyle's? All right. Any other business? Okay. So I'll turn it back over to Mr. Wheeler's, Wheeler for the matters that are public.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We have eleven people in the audience right now. If you'd like to address counsel for up to three minutes, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Going once, going twice. I don't see any hands raised.
All right. Any further comments from counselors? Mr. Boyle, are you good to go? All right.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.